Rearing to go. Fifteen second delay on broadcast, great. Yep, yep. All good. Welcome. Welcome to the first hearing of the Public Accountability and Works Committee Inquiry into the New South Wales Government's Use and Management of Consulting Services. I start by acknowledging the Gadigal people of the Eora Nation, the traditional custodians of the lands on which we are meeting today. I pay my respects to elders past and present and celebrate the diversity of Aboriginal peoples and their ongoing cultures and connections to the lands and waters of New South Wales. I also acknowledge and pay my respects to any Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander people who are joining us today and anyone who is watching online. This inquiry has been established to examine whether the use of private consulting firms across New South Wales government agencies is delivering appropriate outcomes in terms of the ethical, effective and efficient policymaking and service delivery. At today's hearing, the committee seeks to understand current government policies and practice around engagement and management of consultants, sorry, around engagement and management of management consultants. And we'll start by hearing from the Audit Office of New South Wales, which in March this year released a performance audit on New South Wales government agencies' use of consultants. Then we will be hearing from New South Wales Health about the use of consultants in the health sector. And finally, we'll be hearing from New South Wales Procurement about the New South Wales Government's procurement policy framework. Before we commence, I'd like to make some brief comments about the procedures for today's hearing. Today's hearing is being broadcast live via the Parliament's website. A transcript of today's hearing will be placed on the committee's website when it becomes available. In accordance with the broadcasting guidelines, the House has authorised the filming, broadcasting and photography of committee proceedings by representatives of media organisations from any position in the room and by any member of the public from any position in the audience. Any person filming or photographing proceedings must take responsibility for the proper use of that material. This is detailed in the broadcasting resolution, a copy of which is available from the secretariat. While parliamentary privilege applies to witnesses giving evidence today, it does not apply to what witnesses say outside of their evidence at the hearing. I therefore urge witnesses to be careful about comments you may make to the media or to others after you complete your evidence. Committee hearings are not intended to provide a forum for people to make adverse reflections about others under the protection of parliamentary privilege. And in that regard, it's important that witnesses focus on the issues raised by the inquiry terms of reference and avoid naming individuals unnecessarily. And all witnesses have a right to procedural fairness according to the procedural fairness resolution adopted by the House in 2018. If witnesses are unable to answer a question today and want more time to respond, they can take a question on notice. Written answers to questions taken on notice are to be provided within 21 days unless the committee has resolved on an earlier date. And in relation to the evidence that you're giving today at this first session, that will be a 21-day timeframe. If witnesses wish to hand up documents, they should do so through the committee staff. In terms of the audibility of the hearing today, I remind both committee members and witnesses to speak into the microphone. We have a fantastic new audio system here in the Macquarie Room, so it's, yeah, we hopefully won't have any of the problems that we had in the last term of Parliament. Finally, could everyone please turn their mobile phones to silent for the duration of the hearing? So, I now welcome our first witnesses from the Audit Office of New South Wales. And I'm going to ask you to each please state your name and position title and then swear either an oath or an affirmation.
Do you have to actually switch this on?
No, it should just be automatic.
Thank you. Margaret Crawford, Auditor General for New South Wales. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Mrs. Goodwin.
Ian Goodwin, Deputy Auditor General. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you, Ms. Magoto.
Claudia Magotto, Assistant Auditor General, Performance Audit. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Fabulous. Auditor General, would you like to commence by making a opening statement?
Thank you, Chair. Very briefly, thank you very much for your invitation for us to provide evidence to this inquiry. You have my submission, which details our audits. That will be the basis for our evidence today. As you see, the use and management of consultants has been a topic of interest for my office for some time. This is because of the level of spending and the risk that is presented when consultancies are not well managed. These risks include whether agencies receive value for money, whether probity and conflicts of interest, real or perceived, are properly managed, and whether advice received is evidence-based, objective and not designed to prosecute a desired outcome. While not a finding of our reports, attention, of course, has recently been drawn to the risk that government information is managed confidentially. In addition to the risk presented by poor management of consultancies, common findings of my reports relate to the lack of oversight, inconsistent classification and failings regarding data and transparency. These failings make it difficult to accurately determine the quantum of spending on consultants. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I will start just by asking a few broad questions then, particularly in relation to that 2023 report that you released in March. $1 billion spent on consultants over the last five years that we know of. And I, you know, initiated this inquiry very much on the back of that report. But as you say, like so many others, I've been shocked pretty much daily by what's coming out of the federal inquiries into the use of consultants in the federal government, particularly in relation to PWC. Do you think that the federal inquiries are simply unveiling a few bad apples? Or do you share my concern that this goes broader than that and that we're looking at systemic structural issues?
Thank you. I can't really comment on the Commonwealth Inquiry, but I think our collective view would be that this, the issues or the risks associated with consultancies would not be limited to one firm. Certainly, our reports don't, you know, focus in on any one particular consultancy firm. The risks are more broadly, you know, apply to other firms as well.
Do you see any evidence of there being almost the business model of these consulting firms to grab a foothold in government and then to capitalise on that?
I don't think I can comment specifically to that. What I can say, and it's detailed in our reports, is that often with what we see is an initial engagement and then that engagement being extended and extended. And in the cases, some of the cases we referenced in our report, the value of the extensions far exceeded the initial engagement.
Why is it that, I guess, can you explain for the committee what the, this, what looks to be an overuse and overreliance of, on consulting firms by government agencies? Why, if that is the case, why would that be such a big risk to the integrity of the public sector? Why should we be caring?
Well, in the first instance, at no time do we ever say it's inappropriate for government to use consultancies. You know, there are, there are good reason why governments would want the expert or specialist advice on different topics. So, we're not saying that that in itself is a problem. For us, the issue is around the management of those engagements. And I guess the nature of the engagements, to make sure that they are strategic and seeking that expert independent advice and not just replacing the work that may normally be done by public servants.
And that's one of the big distinctions you make in that report, is that there, as you say, there's, you know, the effective use of consultants would be to use them where the public sector is lacking that specialist expertise or there's a, you know, perhaps a need to do something quickly that the, the public sector would not ordinarily have the time to do or the capacity to do. But you identified that you were also seeing examples of consultants being used for, for what would more, I guess, be seen as the core functions of government. Can you elaborate on that?
Well, I, I will, I perhaps defer to my deputy on some of that, but there is judgment here about what's, what is core, core to government. But I think our reports have called out specific examples that would point to things you would think, well, surely, public servants could and should be doing those things. But Ian, did you want to add to that?
Thank you. I think there's, I'll probably point the committee to three of the Auditor General's reports. Obviously, the first report that you mentioned, Chair, on the use of consultants in March this year. They are the Performance Audit on the Design and Implementation of Tahi and the State Finances 2021 Report, which is a financial audit summary report. In the two performance audits, it is noted that the audit team saw engagements that account, that range from accounting and legal advice, project management, provision of administrative support and secretariat services. We do, we do have seen through the course of our work, particularly with a central agency such as New South Wales Treasury, which positions itself as a central agency around financial advice to government, engaging, engaging firms under consultancy where they are doing, preparing meeting agendas, circulating minutes, arranging meetings, or doing accounting advice that you, on public sector accounting, where you would, you would think that the New South Wales Treasury would have the expertise and should have the expertise on public sector accounting.
Yeah.
Follow up on that theme, just want to explore, because there was a couple of interesting pieces of evidence there. So, if there is a, it seems to be as though you're saying that there could be a default laziness, if you like, in extending some of these contracts. They're in place, they've got pre-approval, let's just keep using them.
Sorry, Mr. Magoto, could you bring the microphone closer?
Sorry, I'm, yep, always guilty of this. And then, I'm interested to know whether this is then feeding into a kind of a vicious cycle where the public sector gets denuded of the internal skills and intellectual property to be able to do what they might have been done doing competently 30, 20 years ago. Is that like a fair assessment?
So, that's certainly the risk. That, that's what's been called out by the auditor. The, the risk is when you start using a firm. Certainly, if it, once you've got a firm engaged, it's far more efficient to keep rolling that contract over than perhaps going to the market. But the flip side to that is whether you build an undue reliance. And the risk of that undue reliance is an erosion, the risk of an erosion of capability across the public service for core policy and core work that a central agency would do. But also the risk that you lose that diversity of view when you keep going back to the same firm over and over.
And is, but is it the AG's view that we're, that's the point we're at?
I think what the, what's getting called out in the reports is there's a risk. And if it's not properly managed and considered, the risk is that you will see an erosion of capability. So, there was, there was a, I guess everyone's aware that there was a contentious accounting view on the general government sector accounting for Tahi, which sort of sat around, which has been called out by the auditor general, was close to a qualification of the whole government's accounts. Now, that nested itself around public sector accounting. And there was a firm that was heavily involved, in fact, on advice on two departments around the public sector accounting. I would like to think that a central agency would be an expertise, have the expertise to deal with those public sector accounting issues. And in the end, it sort of got to a point where it nearly was a qualification of whole government accounts.
Yes, I remember it well. Just one more quick, back to one of the chair's opening comments about the billion dollars that we know of. Does that mean that because of the lack of data and appropriate surgical reporting back on the precise quantum, that it could be a lot more?
I think that million dollars is what we were able to calculate from, from various sources. There are four key sources of data on this matter, but it is a subset. It's probably a subset of a broader spend that, you know, maybe called something else or, but it, that would be a subset. So, we would expect that the spend is probably larger.
We don't have any ballpark estimates on what that might be?
I wouldn't like to give you a ballpark. But what we're asking or recommending is that the Procurement Board and Procurement New South Wales do the sort of analytical work that we did for that audit report to, to try to really track this and to be much more, much clearer about the quantum and transparency around that.
Just before we leave that point then, can you explain a bit more about why that data's not complete and particularly that distinction between contractor and consultant?
Yeah, definitions. Look, I, I could have a go at it, but I think Ian would do that much better than me, so if you wouldn't mind.
Sure. So, I guess there are, just to backtrack, so the billion dollars from the annual report data, that was with the audit team aggregating 350 annual reports over that five-year period. So, the annual reports are the only data source that itemises specific consultancy expenditure over $50,000. So, it's a broader dataset. But as has been noted, there are limitations. And the limitations sit around, as the chair just pointed out, inconsistencies in the definition of the role of what is a consultant versus what is a contractor. And in fact, within the audit evidence reported in that report, I think we had a sample of 36 engagements where it was able to identify that there was some, arguably some misclassification around that. So, inconsistency in definite, application definitions is an issue. The other issue is exclusion of particular agencies from annual reporting requirements. So, the report calls out that local health districts, which are required to prepare financial statements, are not required under the current requirements to prepare an annual report. So, they don't disclose what consultancies they, they have engaged because they don't have the annual report. What they're doing is consistent with the requirements set out by, by the regulations. They're not captured in the Ministry of Health's annual report. So, the actual expenditure will be rolled up and the financial reports of the local health districts are in the Ministry of Health's financial report. But in the Ministry of Health's annual report, consistent with the regulations, they only include consultancies of the ministries engaged. So, it, it's very difficult to know what that gap is, but the report calls out that it's probably at least $170 million just on LHDs. There are also certain SOCs, so, and corporations, that are also exempted from having to disclose your consultancy expenditure.
So. What, just sorry to divert the attention, but on that point, because it's something I was reading earlier about SOCs being exempt, what, what was the rationale behind exempting SOCs, given that the New South Wales taxpayer has a direct stake via, in some cases, 100% shareholding?
That's probably a question best referred to New South Wales Treasury.
Yep.
As the, as the policy owner of those regulations.
Okay, thanks.
And could I just add that there are changes to annual reporting requirements that will take effect from the start of the next financial year. They still will provide for exemptions, but the arrangements will more generally apply, for example, to local health districts from the 1st of July, unless exempted.
Could I just go back to a little way? Mr. Goodwin, you were talking about contract extensions and variations, and you particularly referred to the design and implementation report of the transport asset holding entity.
Sorry, Dr. Kane, could you bring your microphone forward?
Sure. So, going back to contract extensions and variations, and I note that in the Auditor General's report into the transport asset holding entity, actually Treasury responded that they, you know, to your recommendations, that they were going to engage a more thorough process to manage contract variations and extension. My question is, what was the process for managing extensions and variations prior to this new commitment to, to develop something?
So, the New South Wales procurement guidelines provide guidance around that, but I might just invite Claudia Magoto, Assistant Auditor General, and the head of our Performance Audit, just to touch on that a bit.
So, I can't really speak to what changes Treasury might have implemented in response, but the Procurement Board guidelines does provide that. There, there does need to be justification for a variation and that agencies have a responsibility to anticipate any additional costs that might arise at the outset of the engagement so that they can be incorporated or that a variation may be able to be anticipated.
But did you find that that was happening?
For the Tahi engagements?
Yeah.
I, I don't think we can, yeah, would you like to?
So, we certainly found that there were certain contracts where they, I think, there was a contract of about, initially engaged with a big four firm by Treasury for advice around the application of accounting standards, the changes in accounting standards. That was in the order of $360,000. Upon completion, it was in the order of $2.4, $2.5 million.
We could take it on notice.
But we could clarify the exact number. It's in, it's in the report, but it's in that, in that order of contract variation.
Sorry, Chair, if I could just ask a follow-up question then, in the same space. So, in your more recent report, the March 2023 audit, you provide a case study of Sydney Metro and the variation of contracts, which seem to start just below a reporting threshold and end just before another reporting threshold. Given the Tahi experience and, and the example you give, I just wondered if you had any comments about practice around variation or indeed around the use of thresholds?
Did you want to speak to that?
Well, I guess in relation to the Sydney Metro example that you're referring to, yeah, that's correct. So, there was a, it came through as a single-source procurement, which is permitted up to amounts of $250,000. And the original contract awarded was $249,000. And then it was extended, an allowable maximum was half a million, and it was extended up to, to $479,000. So, we use that example in the report because there are a couple of risks there related to a single-source procurement with a variation that, that, you know, doubles the cost of the, of the, the total contract value.
And did you find that the variation process you were talking about, which is set out in the procurement guidelines, was followed in that case?
I, I, I'm not quite sure if I could say that the, the guidelines was followed. What we were looking to see was, as I, as I mentioned earlier, whether the cost of the additional variation was anticipated or could reasonably be anticipated at the, at the outset of that, that contract. And I think that's what we're essentially saying is the issue there, that the possibility of a contract variation, that the increased contract of the, the increased cost of the engagement could reasonably have been anticipated at that point.
Thank you.
Through, through your chair, if I just, might just add one thing. The guidelines, procurement guidelines do provide some guidance, particularly around thresholds. But I'd go back to the Auditor General's opening statement. And, and what we're talking in this context, we're not so much talking about the firms, we're talking about the public service and how they manage the use of consultants. And irrespective of the guidelines, and, and one should always ensure that they comply with the guidelines, there are just some principles that the Auditor General said in the opening statement, which are, you should ensure that you're achieving value for money, you're getting advice that is not going to be captured and, or lack objectivity or lack impartiality, and that conflicts of interest and probity are properly managed. Now, they're just good hygiene principles, irrespective of compliance with a guideline that you should always be striving when engaging consultants.
I will just let Mrs. Carter ask a question.
Thank you, Chair. And I wonder if we could go back to the issue that we were talking about before in relation to the concerns you've raised in relation to risk of using consultants, that there's a loss of skills in, in the public service. I note that the recommendations in your report to Parliament in March didn't actually state that the New South Wales Government should reduce its use of consultants. And I wondered why, if, what the level of concern was and why you didn't make the recommendation to reduce the use of consultants?
Perhaps a, a general answer in the first instance, the Auditor General can't make any comment or provide advice to government in relation to policy matters, and it really is a matter for government as to whether they engage consultants or not. Again, our reporting is really calling out the risks, but also saying, manage, manage it, manage it properly. But to say, you know, we would not normally make a recommendation to government, which is really on a, a policy matter like, you know, reduce the amount, that wouldn't be something that an auditor general would do.
Even though you're identifying risks with that policy?
We might in a specific, if we had a specific example, that we were, but not as a general statement, I wouldn't think.
If I might just add to what the auditor general's mentioned there, I think we have to be very careful about, we're not management. And, and management in those executive agencies need to take the responsibility around the decision, the strategic decision to use a consultant, and then the compliance. The, there is sufficient guidance, which while can, can be improved to improve clarification on definitions, but the procurement policy framework goes, states that you need to ensure that you're demonstrating value for money. And the risk called out by the auditor general is to ensure that you don't create an undue reliance or erosion. But ultimately, those decisions are decisions for management. What the auditor general's called out is the risks that should be managed in making those decisions.
So, would it be a fair summary of what you're telling us, that there's no issue with the use of consultants, provided that they are managed appropriately and in accordance with the guidelines?
That's correct.
Value for money proposition that's been mentioned as a metric a few times now, is there any precision around this, about what it actually means? Do we know, is there a kind of a goal standard of measuring, like a standard cost benefit analysis?
It's, it's an unhelpful comment, but it's an art more than a science. So, I don't think it's a prescribed formula. What I would, would offer is that when we do the orders and we, we do look at value for money, what we would always be looking for is whether the management has actually made an assessment against a value for money criteria. Management should establish that criteria and it should be documented. What we find is that when we seek evidence of a value for money assessment, the records are, may not exist. And so, one of the other issues that's called out is record-keeping practices across agencies when making those decisions.
I think my colleague has a quick, but just before, just quickly, is that one of, is that value for money proposition one of the mandatory requirements or not?
I.
To do an assessment.
Because I read in the, one of the.
So, the procurement policy framework states that routinely exercising extensions or rollover contracts can reduce competition and limits access to new suppliers. For those reasons, the policy states, the policy framework states that agencies must only extend contracts where it can be demonstrated that doing so will deliver value for money. So, it is called out in the framework. And what we would look for is that management have done that assessment.
To the government questions, I just wanted to pick up, there's a few things before we leave them. So, I guess, just, let's go to that one first. So, that is one of the things that you also raised in the 2023 report, but also in the, the Order Insights Report, the 2018 to 2022, was this lack of, of post-engagement assessment. So, if you're working out the value for money, you would expect that once the consultants have done their work and we get to the end of that, that there would be an assessment as to how, how good that, that project was and whether or not it was value for money. If I recall correctly, you looked at like 82 contracts or something, and only four of them had actually gone through that process? Is that correct?
Three.
Three?
Yep.
Sorry. Despite that being a requirement, as I understand it, under the procurement guidelines, can you elaborate on, how, how does that happen, that these, these agencies aren't being required to then do those post-engagement assessments?
I, I think it goes to, I, I probably can't answer the question of how, how does it happen, why doesn't it happen? Um, I I think it goes to, um, I I I probably can't answer the question of how how does it happen, how why doesn't it happen? Um, but I think it goes to our our central findings around the management uh of of consultants and the procurement board and procurement New South Wales visibility of um the processes that are occurring at the agency level.
So we so we have.
Chair, it it really goes to a recommendation more to the procurement board and to procurement New South Wales, because we also say in our reports that consultants aren't used strategically, and what we're really saying, meaning there is that, you know, there is a role for the procurement board to assess where where do we get the best benefit? Um, looking across the sector, where where have we got great outcomes that other agencies could learn from or or apply? So that's what we mean when we say they're not, we're not using consultancies strategically.
So when we're talking about, you know, whether or not we should be reducing consultants' spend, et cetera, we have a billion dollars going out in five years from government of government spend on consulting. And we have presumably from, at least from the sample you did, a very small amount of those actually being assessed as to whether they're value for money. Um, just picking up on the question that Ms. Carter asked before I hand over um to Mr. Primrose. Um, the previous government had an election commitment that they would um in two thousand and nineteen that they would spend four years of reducing the um total spend on consultants by twenty percent every year for four years. Um, but as you note in your report, they actually spent like more than more than they were spending before, so not only did they not meet that that reduction, um but they actually spent was like a hundred million more than they had targeted to. Um, what does that say about our, like even when we're trying to reduce um spend on consultants, we can't, what does that say about our over reliance on consultants and and what the public sector is now capable of doing?
Yeah, okay.
I think in in the first instance, it says something about monitoring um and whether this that commitment was being effectively monitored. So what's called out in the report is that the way that commitment was executed was to reduce the budgets in agencies by that by that amount. Um, and then and then it was assessed that by reducing the budgets that are available, that they've met the commitment. What didn't happen was using the data, the actual expenditure spent, the recurrent expenditure that's captured in prime. So prime is the financial system within Treasury, used for preparing the budget and whole government reporting. Um, prime has its own limitations because it's only recurrent expenditure of general government sector agencies. But the actual expenditure was but was not being monitored through there, and that's the hundred million that you're talking about comes from prime. Now, what that probably means is that expenditure on consultants was probably spent at the expense of something else if the budgets had already been reduced.
Right.
But it's a question of whether that was being effectively monitored.
Right, it sounds very hard to actually reduce um the spend on consultancy when we're trying, um sorry, Mr. Primrose.
Before you ask me to preemptively, um, three questions if I can, just so I understand. Um, it's correct, isn't it, that the New South Wales Procurement Board is responsible for monitoring New South Wales Government Agencies' compliance with procurement policies and directives? Okay? In relation to monitoring New South Wales Government Agencies' use of consultants, what specific checks are you aware that they actually undertake?
Uh, I think it's important to note that the the process of managing consultants in compliance with procurement board directions essentially occurs through a devolved system, and so it operates at at the agency level. So agencies will have their specific arrangements that reflect the procurement board requirements.
So it's more aspirational than actually determining if it happens.
Monitoring is probably the operative word there, if as you as you say, if you're describing the role.
How do you know, so it's for good and against evil, but how do you know that?
There is self-reporting, um, and secretaries are accountable for uh compliance with the with the policies.
Who do they account to?
Uh, I think they are required to um provide information back to the procurement board, as I say, it's self-reporting information, so then the procurement is up to the procurement board what it does with that.
Would you be comfortable with that and then I'll?
Yes, sir.
I think we've called that out in our reports as a weakness in the system.
Okay.
The self-reporting nature, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there's a, why don't I just go back to the opening point? Um, while the the procurement board has a has a role as set in the framework and has a role of should be monitoring the things that are asked it to be done, so there are things around if uh a certain consultancy contract was not effectively performing or was performed to an unsatisfactory standard, that should be reported. And contracts over a hundred and fifty thousand, and the report calls out that that's not actively monitored. But I think it's, you can't walk away from the responsibility of line management who are the ones commissioning the work, whether they're commissioning the work taking a strategic approach as well as a compliant approach.
So who's monitoring the people who are supposedly being the monitors?
The procurement board at the moment sits within. We're in Treasury, so that's probably a question that's best directed to New South Wales Treasury.
Oh, yes, we will.
And um and then secretaries would operate through a delegation structure. Um, and and that's not unusual, um but I I wouldn't, I wouldn't like to le- leave the belief that it's only the procurement board, line management has a role here to make sure that.
Those, sorry, those procurement boards themselves, like the procurement board is made up of the secretaries of government agencies, right, so you've got the, a board comprised of secretaries of government agencies regulating the procurement by secretaries of government agencies effectively. That seems like perhaps that structure is not necessarily very robust.
It.
It should be.
It it should be, um and I guess one of the things that's that's called out is transparency is always a friend here. Um, and if there's effective transparency measures where all consultancy arrangements are made available in a transparent manner, that becomes a self-check on the system.
Can I just ask one more, so and then I promise it'll be my last one. And that is.
We're all very eager.
Reading through an article from twenty years ago, oh twenty one years ago, um by um Christopher Wright and Jim Cate and titled But Does It Work: Perceptions of the Impact of Management Consulting. Um, if I could just quote from their abstract here. Based on extensive interview data, we find that consultants and clients commonly rely on subjective assessments of consulting impact and quote impression management. A counterveiling high impact rhetoric is discerned amongst large consulting firms, which stresses the measurable bottom line results of consulting interventions. We interpret this discourse as a legitimation strategy aimed at countering the growing critique of consulting. Um, would you like to comment on on that?
Um, I don't think I should comment on that. Um, I think again, the point that we're making here, it's how well engagements are managed. Uh, whether they're, you know, they're planned, they're strategic in nature and well managed as opposed to um whether they should, you know, whether there is any value or not in getting a consultant.
Okay, so can I? The term impression management strikes me as being important in that. Um, and from what we've just had our discussion in relation to the procurement board, there are some, the whole of the procurement board, I suspect from what we've, your report suggests is that ensuring that there's appropriate impression management. Um, um, those on that board may have um a direct interest in that, but I'll leave that um right as a comment rather than.
Dr. King.
Thank you, Chair, um possibly a quick question, going back to the procurement board, the idea of self-report, their monitoring role. Um, in your experience, which, you know, with all of the audits that you've done, some of which we've we've heard cited here, have you ever found any sanction on either a consultancy firm or an agency for disregarding the guidelines?
I I think the level of coverage in terms of more sort of regulatory action, as you you might characterize it, that may be a question best directed at Treasury. Uh, in the sample of audits that we looked at uh for our uh performance audit, eighty two audits, uh we we didn't necessarily see within that sanctionable, um, you know, non non-compliances. Uh, our issues may more go to, as the auditor general has said, the management justification and ensuring, you know, good outcomes from those.
But in the absence of reports explaining value for money, et cetera, it would be difficult to sanction because you wouldn't have the reasoning. Would that be?
I think, you know, previous of our reports have outlined that there are gaps uh in the procurement, the procurement board's visibility over some of these issues. Uh, our twenty eighteen audit recommended that they implement uh the vendor management system. Oh, sorry, I should say that they, in response to our recommendations of that audit, the agency committed to implement a vendor management system all correctly.
And has that happened?
That has yet to happen, but and that would be one of the key uh, you know, areas potentially increasing their visibility of the day to day operation of consulting engagements.
So I'm just going to go into defence mode of them a little. Uh, so one of the the things that the procurement board has done has, it they've introduced what's called a standard commercial framework. And that, um, I mean, we haven't audited that specifically, but they would argue that there there uh that has delivered savings because it does place caps on um on consultants at different levels.
Uh, it is a voluntary cap and you estimate the quantum of about twenty seven million, I think, most recently of engagements that go beyond that cap, and I guess the question would then go to data integrity and do we know why that cap has been agreed to be uh that that some consultancies don't need to abide by that cap, in what circumstances, which agencies are choosing that? And why particular organizations, I know one listed in there was Boston Consulting that that um springs to mind, refused to sign up to that that framework, so I just wanted to, have you got, did you find any data or is there any data for us to find about that?
I think those questions should be directed to the procurement board, I I think they would have um some information in to answer some of that.
I think it was in one of your reports where you, I think it was in one of your reports where you referred to one example where Boston Consulting had had a a review of their work, it had been found unsatisfactory and then they'd got a contract extension. Does that ring a bell for you?
Uh, that was.
I'll have to find the reference.
Was one of the three contracts that we had reviewed. That did actually have a post implementation review.
Which is interesting in itself, really, um, could, yes, please go ahead.
I'm interested in uh your discussion of of risks and the management of these consultants and the compliance with the um procurement guidelines and post procurement reviews. Are you of the opinion that a lot of these risks could or should be addressed by further training for the people who are involved with managing these consultants?
Uh, guidance, I think perhaps one of the issues that we do draw out strongly in our report is that there is ambiguity in the guidance, even to the point of the definition of a consultant, uh which is, you know, in practicality, I think we see through the data, through our examination of individual engagements. It's difficult to uh apply without uh guidance um and advice provided around that. And then we've also identified that the advice and guidance that is provided by Procurement New South Wales is ambiguous and and provides examples of things that could potentially be considered advisory services, whereas other aspects are more um, you know, you know, direct service provisions such as data analysis, uh data analysis and so on. Uh, so within those definitions, uh there's ambiguity and that's probably a starting point uh for improving practices would be to improve that that advice and guidance and specificity.
Can I um, can I just turn us back to, there was mentioned before of health and the the, I guess, the unknown amount um that the local health districts are spending on consultants because that's not reported up. And that was identified in your March report. Um, of those eighty two, was it eighty two contracts that were reviewed in the March report? Um, how many of them were from health? Were any of them?
No, uh, none of those were sampled from New South Wales Health, so we we sampled, I can list the agencies that were, if that's helpful, but.
I'm just curious if any was was with health, um, so we've been looking into the local health districts in my office and trying to, going through those annual reports um and trying to put together um how much we think they are spending. Um, and I can table a document that that shows what we believe to be around a hundred and twenty four million dollars spent by those local health districts in the last um, you know, since those reforms in two thousand and eleven, um, which compared to some of the the, you know, the major departments within government is actually, you know, a far greater expend than many of them put together. Um, but also dwarfs the amount of um of money that's being spent by the health department on consultants. Um, does that sound about right to you? Have you done that work and tried to to piece together what's being disclosed in those annual reports for local health districts?
Yeah, so um, I I think in in your journal's report in in March, it it estimated that there was about a a hundred and seventy million. That that's an estimation, but it comes, so within the financial, so local health districts still prepare financial reports or financial statements which are audited, and within that you'll get an aggregate consultancy expenditure. What it won't do is list out, because it's it's a line item of expense, it won't list out by consultancy. So we we can estimate what that gap might be. Um, what we don't have the detail i- is what is in that gap. Um, uh, because it's it's not required to be reported un- under the schedules.
So if we include that to the amount that we have coming directly from health, that actually makes health quite a large um, a spender on consultants compared to other departments within government, would that be right?
We haven't broken down total expenditure per agency across the whole government sector, what we did was look at um annual reports to get that total spending figure of a billion, and then we looked at ten individual agencies to look at their compliance, so we can't answer a specific question about agency by agency spend.
That, you you would imagine intuit, well, somewhat intuitively, if, I think the health accounts for thirty percent of the state budget, then it 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 stands to reason, the chair's logic stands to reason that they would be proportionately a large spender on consultants as well. Is it a little bit incongruent that there's a level of opaqueness about the expenditure on the qualitative nature of the consultants as well? Is that a concern for the AG?
Yeah.
Just, I I'll just go and answer the the opening question of how much is spent by the ministry, so that in the ministry itself um, in fiscal twenty two, so the last financial year, the consultant spend was about twenty two point three million for the ministry. So there's, and then there's separately the LHD, so that is that is available and and you are correct, the Ministry of Health is one of the larger agencies um in terms of scale and complexity of of the New South Wales Government.
Could I ask a follow up question, which sort of links definitional ambiguity to the local area health district? So like yourself, um Chair, I've had a look at the annual reports and um, you you can see the consultancy spend and then differentiate that to contractors' spend, but given that you've already highlighted that that that's not a neat definition, it is possible that some of that large contractor spend might be otherwise categorized as consultancy as well, so it could hide some of the consultant's spend inadvertently or otherwise in that contractor spend.
Correct, um probably vice versa as well.
Sure.
Okay, so we're we're effectively looking at quite a a large amount of expenditure that so far has not been subject to your audits, your audit process, and has not been sort of reported as part of this consultant spend. Um, I went back and had a look at your report from two thousand and nineteen on the governance of local health districts, which I found incredibly useful and interesting. Um, and there was a a lot of talk there um about the need for the essential um decision makers involved in these local health districts to have um greater expertise in um sort of understanding the financial and operational sort of performance data of those districts. Um, you specifically talk about reviewing and analyzing data. Um, if these boards don't have those skills, um, do you think that they are then less capable of assessing the? of assessing the value for money of consultants? And, you know, is, do you, can you, can you imagine it sort of driving, I guess, a greater use of consultants if we have not really, I guess, the people with the right skills sitting on those boards?
You're referring to the audit we did on the governance of local health districts?
Yes.
Okay, that's really going to test me, my memory of that. I don't know that we could make the finding that you're, you're suggesting. We couldn't necessarily make that. I mean, I think those boards are set up to have a mixture of skills. So you, you would think that that means that they are equipped to, to oversight the health districts, both from a, in relation to consultants and other matters. So we were more, yeah, I really can't remember the specifics, can you Claudia?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think it's a, a general question about LHD board capability. I, I would probably answer it by saying that if we were to look at that and we didn't specifically in that audit in relation to the management of consultants, we would be looking to see good advice, robust advice, that's consistent with procurement board directions and guidance being provided into those boards to support their decision-making.
It's come back to me now, I do remember, what we were looking at in that audit was really the, the oversight of the ministry, and how those, the government, the clarity of governance arrangements between ministry and local health districts, as opposed to looking specifically at capability. Some of our commentary about capability, I think, from memory went to the employees of local health districts, as opposed necessarily to the board members themselves.
And you noted there, that there were certain relationships that needed further consideration. For example, we had board members of those local health districts being appointed directly by the minister. Those, those board members were choosing their chair, but the chair had to be signed off by the Secretary of Health. But then when it came to the, sort of the chief executive and the other senior executives, they were being employed directly by the Health Secretary, or are directly employed by the Health Secretary. And you pointed that out in the report, that this sort of created this kind of two masters, where these, this sort of executives within these districts were reporting both to the ministry, as well as to this supposedly independent board. Can you elaborate on that and the sort of potential for, I guess, why that matters in terms of governance of?
Yeah, it was, it was at the time, and I think it'd be better if health answers questions in relation to current arrangements. But at that time, there was definitely a degree of confusion about accountability because of the way the LHDs was, were structured and their relationship with the ministry. So that was, that, that lack of clarity was what we were calling out in, in that audit report. And, yeah, it'd be good to follow that up with, with ministry staff, I think, rather than us.
Yeah, will do. One of the, I guess, something that's, you know, that you sort of gesture towards but don't talk about directly in that report, is the potential for conflicts of interest, sort of on the operation of those boards. Are you aware of the number of consultants, either those who are currently employed by consulting firms, or have, you know, immediately in the past been employed by consultant firms, sitting as board members on those local health districts?
Yeah, I think we have some insights into that, perhaps not, you know, comprehensive, but some.
Yeah. So I probably would frame the answer around current big four partners, so it, it just in sort of considering the conversation that might unfold this morning. We did have a look at audit and risk committees, so, which is, can be different to a finance and performance committee in terms of agreement. But we did look at the boards and audit risk committees and just consider whether, just limiting the search to partners, existing partners in big four firms as to where they, whether they sit. The relevance of that question is obviously they're in an executive management role elsewhere, and in, in a, in a business that looks to sell. The quick, the quick look at that is that we haven't seen, certainly aware of one in the past, but as it currently stands, not on any of the LHDs. So there are some partners that sit on other agencies, such as Semataries, Museum of Applied Arts and Taronga Zoo, but not the LHDs at this point.
There are still, for example, on, I believe it's the South Eastern Sydney Local Health District, there is a, an ex-partner of PWC sitting on that board today who has declared a financial interest still in PWC who is sitting there. So there, there are certainly examples, and as you say, there's plenty of examples in the past on those boards, and I'll come to that with health later. But also within that, that sort of chief executive and senior executive function, you know, just from a very quick, you can do a Google search or a LinkedIn search to find the numbers of, of ex-consultants from KPMG, EY, Deloitte, PWC, who are now employed within, at very senior levels within those health districts. Given the opaqueness of the local health district's engagement of consulting firms, does that give you cause for concern?
So I think it's, 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 it's an interesting question, and somewhat a tricky question, because one of the things you would want to get on boards is a diverse set of skills and deep expertise. And there's no doubt, as a general comment, rather than a specific comment, across any of these large firms, partners would have diverse and deep expertise. As a general comment. So you, if they, I think it would be a very strong proposition to suggest that a retired partner should not be on those boards, because the, the downside to that is you deny the expertise and the deep set of knowledge and diverse skills that could be made available. It goes back to the opening statement, and in the inquiry and your general's comment, this is more about management of the use of consultants, rather than the suggestion that there should be an absolute prohibition. And, and the management of that is making sure that where there's a conflict of interest or a financial interest, that's declared. Good practice would suggest that, once declared, if there's business being discussed where you might have a financial interest, you would, you would exit yourself from those discussions. They're, they're just sort of the, the good practice principles, that's, for example, Australian Institute of Company Directors would suggest in a more generic, generic sense.
So taking it then back to that more systemic level, if we look at the United Kingdom, when they brought in their reforms to their health system in 2012, which were almost identical in terms of the devolution of, of responsibility to particular boards or trusts across different regional parts of, of that jurisdiction. There was then some quite scandalous news that followed in the years afterwards about the increased use of consultants on those, for those boards. On the basis that, that, you know, the contention was that they had been set up to fail, that you had these boards that were unable, simply unable, to perform the, you know, all of the financial and operational activities that they needed to without the use of consultants. And in that case, we had a very clear track of consultants actually being the ones to propose that structure in the first place. So if, if we have a situation where consultants are proposing particular structures to government, government implement them, and then we end up with an over-reliance on those consultants within these new structures, does that cause concern for, from an audit perspective, from a, looking at whether or not we're actually using these consultants in the right way and managing them in the right way?
I think largely, Chair, these are matters better put to the Ministry of Health. If we conducted an audit that I, that actually found failures that, you know, that stem from the matters you're raising, we would call that out, but I don't think we, we're equipped to make a general comment.
Please go ahead.
Oh, sorry.
We'll go first to Dr Kane.
Thank you, Chair. I, Mr Goodman, I just wanted to ask a little bit, you talk about deep expertise of consultants, and I'm presuming that if you have deep expertise in consultants and, and the services they provide, that that would be reflected in the results of projects that they've been involved in. I'm thinking, I hope I'm not taking it the wrong way, but I'm thinking from the, the Tahi investigations, that perhaps was not the case. And in fact, there is a dearth of evidence showing positive outcomes from the use of consultants, and to, and to carry on from the Chair, there's a recent article from 2020 looking at the use of consultants in the British health system, which actually shows a decline, that decline that you're speaking of. So I just wondered that, that your, your description as deep expertise, I wondered if there's been any attempt by anyone that you know of to look at some of the normative assumptions, that's a very normative assessment of what consultants bring to the table, without the corresponding, it would seem, data or evidence to support.
I might just make a clarifying comment, if I, if I may. So when I was talking about the expertise, I was talking in terms of what an individual who has now left a practice could bring to a board, but as distinct from the success of particular consultancy engagements. So my, my comment was more about just ensuring that whatever system you do set up, you don't deny your access to individuals that have expertise. But you would, but the principles of declaration of conflicts of interest or financial interest, always, those governance and property measures always need to sort of be the, the guardrails to, to accessing that, that, that expertise. The broader comment, I'm not sure that we, what we did in the audit, the audit general's audit, was an assessment around how the public service was engaging consultants, which had both, were, were they strategic in nature, were they meeting the, the definitions, were they compliant in nature? It wasn't necessarily a test of whether the outcome of those consultancies were the right outcomes. And I think it's fair to say, one can always point to examples where perhaps there weren't good outcomes, but it's probably fair to say that one could also point to other outcomes as well.
Has there been any global assessment, or any, not even global, any, we're talking about the dearth of data and, and not collecting data, are you aware of any assessment of success?
No.
Not, not from, not from our work. And I'll just remind you also that in our work, we did again call out the need for benefits realisation as, as a key part of managing consultancy, so that you can assess whether in fact you did get a good outcome from, from that engagement, yeah.
Thank you.
Mrs Carter.
Just following up on the, I guess, the outsourcing of work to consultants through, for example, local health districts, and the clear, I think, picture that's emerging that there's work being done by consultants. And in terms of the, the systemic issues around the value for money proposition, I'm wondering, has there been any work done, or is there in fact even an audit process that could be done to look at, if this work was not being outsourced to consultants, what would the cost be to the agency of employing full-time staff, maintaining full-time staff with the relevant spread of expertise, to do what might actually be project-based work, and whether systemically consultants can be, create more value for money than, than a workforce?
We, we have not done that work. I, I can't see why it couldn't be done, but that would really be a matter for management rather than, than us.
Yeah, and I think it's important to, to always go back, management has a, the responsibility here, and management should be able to have the tools, including internal audit, to look at these matters.
Just one question, just on, and then I'll pass back to you, Dr Kane, the, when you were speaking before about, you know, these, sure, like people who have retired, preferably those that don't retain a financial interest in the consultants that they came from, but let's just say that you have a retired consultant sitting on a, on a board. Presumably if we were putting those people on boards because they added that expertise, why are we then seeing an increasing spend on consultants? Like, that, to me, that seems counterintuitive.
It's interesting.
It's, it's an interesting question, and, and I think it goes back to an earlier question around, you know, training and capability. So the, I, I think if I was to try and just probably be a little bit on the defence for the public service, just offer a comment that there's, there's certainly a lot being asked of the public service in terms of policy development. The labour expense cap does put a, a limit on the number of employees you can engage and contractors, and it doesn't include consultants. And so one of the things that has been oft, has been offered in our audits is sometimes there are capacity issues as well as capability needs, and those capacity issues could be structural. I, I would offer, I don't think it's because public servants are lazy, I, I would not share that view, but I think there may be capacity constraints put on the system, and that is, that is a tool. So it goes back to making sure that you have the right structural systems in place across the public service, so that the capacity exists, as well as you having eroded the capability.
Yep, and it is also fair to remember that New South Wales has been faced with really significant emergency events over the last few years. So while that may not directly impact the, the number of consultants, it certainly has had an impact on capacity to, to manage events at the same time as you're managing core business.
And when you, firstly, I just put on record, I love the public sector, I want more of the public sector, and I certainly would not subscribe to the view that they, that they sort of inherently don't, don't do things better than the private sector. But when we're looking at this previous government strategy to reduce spend on consultants, was that coupled with a strategic rebuilding of public sector capability to take from that, or was it just a, to your knowledge, was that just a, you know, a sort of aspirational goal?
I, I would say that it was quite a, probably a blunt, a fairly blunt instrument, as our report showed that it, it may have, the budgets may have been decreased, but there wasn't a whole programme to then manage that through agencies who in fact did continue to engage consultants from other sources.
Because you could obviously have a, you know, a policy from government where you are actually using consultants to increase the capacity, and to decrease the reliance on external consultants going forward.
Again, we're, we're not commenting on policy.
No.
We can only speak to the work that, that we did.
Dr Kane.
Your Chair, just a slight follow-up, and maybe it's just a re, a reframing, but Mr Goodman, you mentioned the, the labour expense cap, and that's the discussion we've just had. So putting it a different way, if we had a capable and adequately resourced and, and spending on, on the public sector, that then is likely to reduce the use of consultants to cover that gap that you said was the squeeze because of that, that labour expense gap?
I, I'm, at this point, just offering a personal view, rather than a.
You don't have personal views.
Rather than, order, order, and that is, I think the question is a little, perhaps, not to be unfair, it's a little bit, perhaps, I don't think it's as linear, as perhaps a question might propose it is. I think it's more complex than that.
Can I just follow on that? Because it's a very interesting, you know, superficially it appears like it's a dichotomy, but, and some of your evidence has gone to this before. If, if it's, if it's a devolution for management discretion based on the philosophy that a manager of a particular agency should know their subject matter, and therefore they're the best place, people, to make an objective judgement. the best place, people, to make an objective judgement about where to draw the line when we bring in consultants because of their particular areas of expertise and when we use our internal people because we know the business, so to speak. If that, that's really not your remit is what you're saying, that's a kind of a function of management structures and maybe Treasury coming in over the top and making a decision about whether agencies are managing correctly. But your evidence here today, the key theme is that the government wasn't even complying with its own guidelines and regulatory framework to make, even if we agree, we disagree with the use of consultants or not and the adequate place to draw that line I just outlined, they're not even, they weren't even complying with their own guidelines and their own policies. And to date, we're kind of playing catch-up to even get it back to that point where they are complying. Would that be a fair summary of?
It would to some extent, but again, each agency and each agency head would have a view as to the appropriateness or otherwise of their engagement of consultants. I think, again, what our work was saying is there's not visibility of that, there's not reporting of that that's coming back to the centre so that it can be assessed overall. I'm sure there'd be individual secretaries that would have very good reason why they needed to engage a consultant over and above whatever the budget.
We don't know.
We don't know because it hasn't, exactly. And so again, we go to overall monitoring of devolved arrangements and transparency.
Would it be helpful if we expanded the, I guess, the follow the dollar powers for the Auditor Generals, that you could be looking, I understand there's an exclusion at the moment for services that are provided directly to government agencies for their exclusive use, seems like that would capture some consulting spend. Would that allow you to be able to find out more about the use of consultants?
I mean, the obvious answer to that is, is yes, it would. But I would also just offer that the Audit General, through a number of reports going back to 2018, has been calling out these risks and they are coming out of the financial audit work as a report called Internal Controls and Governance, which talks about, you know, consultants and indeed contractors that are on long-term engagements. So I think a very good starting point would be just to go through the recommendations that have already been made and take a stock of those.
Here that this is not necessarily a contemporary revelation. You mentioned 2018 and we're now 2025 years down the track and we really haven't made that much progress.
I think things could be done better is probably what has been called out over a number of years by the Audit General's reports.
Can I just explore another area of off-book sort of potential consultancy spend, so to speak, is this idea of the, I think I saw somewhere the legal panel. So does that mean in a nutshell, if we're employing lawyers and the panel decides that lawyer X Y Z from ABC firm is appropriate, that doesn't have to be classified as a consultancy and therefore it doesn't show up in the spend?
There is a, I'm not sure that I'm going to know totally the detail of this, but there is a legal panel, a legal services panel from which legal firms are sourced. I do not know the reason why it's exempt from reporting. That would need to be, that question would need to be directed to the procurement board.
Is there a similar situation with IT consulting?
Well, that's one of those, you know, tricky areas. So there is a, again, a panel, a professional services sort of panel that relates to IT and there is some confusion then if you engage a person through that panel, whether that's a consultant or not a consultant, it could be engaged through that panel and still be a consultancy. So that's where it just gets a little bit hard to get really underneath the data.
In the context of other jurisdictions and commentary and some of the things that academics have been saying in this area, there's often this reference to the idea of loss leading, you know, the practice of consulting firms, particularly the audit side often, going into a business or a government agency and providing their services at a discount, sometimes pretty much, you know, for nothing, just to get their foot in the door and then to be able to sort of market their other services. Have you looked at that, have you seen any evidence of that in the New South Wales context?
So not in terms of a particular audit report that we've done, at least in my time. Perhaps we've had maybe some more direct experience in relation to our own auditing of the local government sector when we took over that sector because prior to becoming the auditor for that, for local councils, all councils had outsourced their audit services to the private sector. And certainly our experience was that the price they were paying for private sector auditors was extremely low and you would have to question, you know, why was that? And where were those firms making up for the low price they were charging for their audit?
So, yeah, so I could probably just add to the Audit General's comment there. So when the Audit General took over the mandate for that local government sector, the part of how we resourced those audits was to use some of the existing firms initially because it's such a large sector to manage. And it was quite obvious that the audit fees were very low. And it was also, we also saw evidence where some of the firms that were doing the audits as the external auditor before the Audit General took on the mandate, were also providing advice that probably wouldn't meet our standards around independence. So providing advice to management on accounting and then auditing, auditing that. Since the Audit General's taken over the responsibility to manage the audits across the local government sector, we have, obviously the Audit General, the Audit Office doesn't provide other services, so it's simply an audit office. And the firms that do work with us as audit service providers under a contract, and so they are actually our contractors rather than consultants, because they operate to our methodology, the costs of those audits over time have increased. So I think you could probably see a point in time when the firms were, private firms were doing the audits in their own right and we're also doing other advice to the councils. And since the Audit General's taken over the mandate, where we don't allow provisional advice, perhaps that might have been offered in the past.
Evidence that there's a little bit of a quid pro quo going on with reducing the cost for the audit, yep?
Not now.
Not now? No, no, I understand, but yes.
Well, it's, yeah, it's a hard thing because we haven't audited that, I simply would just offer that the fees were low.
Yep.
And we saw evidence of provisioned advice that wouldn't meet our standard.
Yes.
Of independence. And we don't allow that anymore.
Mrs Carter.
And provided didn't meet standards, that's also an indication that those external relationships weren't being managed properly by the local councils.
I couldn't offer a view on that because that's before our time. What I would say is the term of loss lead, I think the firms, to be fair to the firms, would probably argue that's not a practice that they do anymore and that one of the things, obviously, I've asked the question of Price Waterhouse Coopers, that what is the practice there? And they've given the assurance that the audit practice is a different profit centre to other practices. Have not tested it, but that would, I think that would be their view and that the practice of loss lead was a practice that perhaps existed prevalently a while ago. I think the firms would probably say that doesn't exist anymore. Certainly doesn't exist under the arrangements of the Audit General.
But I suppose returning to the theme that we've been exploring where a lot of the issues around the adequacy of the management of the relationship with the consultants, if local councils, whether it was part of a package of services or whatever, if they were paying for and receiving advice which didn't meet appropriate standards, that would suggest that that relationship was not being managed well by the local council.
I don't think Ian's saying that the advice didn't meet the standard. The standard, the standard we're applying is one of independence, that if you're providing auditing services, you should not also be providing advice to the same agency, particularly on accounting matters. I think that's the standard Ian's referring to. Again, speaking on behalf of councils, they probably really appreciated the fact that they could get access to good advice because they, you know, from a capability perspective, really needed that.
Thank you.
I think it's definitely an area we can follow up with each department as well as to see, you know, if they've got examples of contracts that seem a bit cheap in the context. Another one of those kind of broad themes that are coming out in other jurisdictions is this use of consultants to basically rubber stamp a policy that a government had anyway. So whether it's to provide cover for that policy or because somebody more junior is trying to prove it to the, you know, to the minister or whoever that this is, you know, something that they should view as worthwhile, going and getting consultants to basically stamp off on that, is that something you're seeing in New South Wales?
Do you want to speak to that?
Seeing across New South Wales is a fairly broad statement, so I probably couldn't answer the question in the broad. I think the Audit General's deliberately called out that if it's not properly managed, there is a risk, we've used the term undue reliance, and that can manifest itself in terms of losing, getting advice that may not be objective or impartial. And that risk was called out in the State Finance's 2021 report and the design and implementation of Tahai. So I guess if there's an example, perhaps we called out the risk in the context of Tahai.
The phrase I saw referred to was opinion shopping.
I think that's a phrase that someone else might have used, but I understand the phrase. I'm not sure that we saw the evidence of opinion shopping, which might be where you go from firm to firm and then you settle on the firm that you like.
Yep.
Perhaps what we did call out is that in the question of Tahai, there, one firm was offering advice to two departments. There was a question as to whether that advice was given the same answer. And I guess ultimately
The preferred advice, what was the preferred advice?
Yeah, and Treasury probably took a view that they disagreed with one part of the advice to another department from that one firm and preferred the advice that they had. And I guess it's history now that the Audit General said that the advice that Treasury preferred was not necessarily the advice that was going to get a clean opinion, in fact was probably going to get a qualified opinion.
And in that case, and I think maybe what you're thinking of, Mr Buttergig, is we had, so we had KPMG acting for both Treasury and Transport, but then previously there had been a PWC report provided, giving advice, and I think maybe that's where that opinion shopping concept came from. Do you recall?
Yeah, I do recall, so there was, there was an advice from PWC. It was, it was, a lot of the complexities here, the advice was looking at a different question and that was looking at the question of, one of the questions of control. The final model of Tahai had evolved since then. I think it's an interesting question, perhaps to the department that commissioned the advice as to why they didn't settle on the final advice. I think it was settled as a draft advice, but the reality is it was asking, is answering a different question and the model had evolved since then.
I guess looking at, you know, at the end of this process, we're hoping to have recommendations. I heard, you know, this discussion before about these contracts below certain thresholds and we're not getting disclosure on below $50,000. For instance, if we were to have at least a requirement that if, say you have multiple below $50,000 contracts with PWC or with KPMG or whoever, that we could at least see an aggregate, even if you're not getting details of each of those contracts, that you get an aggregate reporting, is that, is that the kind of thing that you think would be a sort of a solid recommendation to get more of a grip on this use of consultants?
I think to some extent, correct me if I'm wrong, the current procurement board or Procurement New South Wales do try to do those aggregates through their cubes, their expense cubes.
Spend cubes?
Yes, spend cubes, got it right. So I think they are making that sort of effort, it's probably not, doesn't have total coverage and again, we would say that it would need to be made transparent.
It seems ad hoc, whereas it could be upfront. It could be an upfront disclosure as opposed to Treasury then having to re-join the dots down the track. That's the
So I think there's a couple of dimensions here if I just offer, transparency obviously is everyone's friend in terms of accountability. So any system where there's transparency on the use of consultants will improve accountability. But the other side of it is just making sure that the probity arrangements on the commissioning are as robust as well. And there are a number of things to be considered. One would be, I know in other jurisdictions, they talk about the role of public servants being able to get, not go to an agency where they've been subject to a tender process. The Commonwealth has quite clear guidelines on that, probably more helpful guidelines than exist in New South Wales. The other thing was just the simple gifts and benefits, you know, having a transparent gifts and benefits register where you're disclosing to make sure that public servants aren't at risk of receiving bad gifts and then offering contracts. I'm not suggesting for a moment that exists, but what I am offering is that transparency is a friend and it's more than just the number, it's about probity measures and part of that would be having open gifts and benefits registers, which the Audit General has commented in the past in the Internal Controls and Governance reports.
And, yeah, sorry, go, Mr Primrose.
Oh, sorry. You may wish to take this on notice or I'm just aware of the clock, but in relation to the state's financial consolidation system prime, are there any particular gaps there that you've identified that, where they, you've mentioned them a couple previously, where your view is that there shouldn't be gaps?
Yeah.
In relation to consultants?
So I think the gap that the Audit General's offered is that where is the single source of truth on the total expenditure of consultants? Prime just happens to serve a particular purpose and the purpose it serves is it aggregates recurrent expenditure in the general government sector. So any expenditure on a consultancy that is capitalised to a project for an accounting purpose, and that can be quite legitimate to capitalise it, so it goes to the balance sheet, won't necessarily show up under that line item of recurrent expenditure. It's still going to be within the whole government account, it's just not sitting in recurring expenditure. So the point I would offer is that prime serves a particular purpose. The audit looked at prime from the perspective of measuring whether the election commitment to reduce expenditure on consultants by 20%, the £100 million, had been achieved because the baseline measure of that election commitment related to current recurrent expenditure across the general government sector, so that's where prime sat. So it's not so much a limitation within prime, it, prime is the accounting system. What prime also doesn't do is it doesn't itemise, as an accounting system, you wouldn't expect it to itemise each expenditure in detail. It will aggregate all of that expenditure across the system, but it won't necessarily tell you that that dollar relates to that consultancy on that agency. That's why we went to the annual reports.
Yep, so should it?
So it just serves a different purpose. And I guess the thing that has been made by the Audit General is what, there should be a single source of truth. Prime is just offering, it's an accounting system and a budget system. It definitely captures recurrent expenditure. The only real question is whether you should be capturing capitalised expenditure. If you want to get the true picture of total expenditure on consultancies, prime's going to give you part of the answer, that doesn't make it incorrect, it's just giving you part of the answer.
Capital, yeah. Can I just take you to your paragraph in your letter, Attorney General to the Chair? Can I just take you to um your paragraph in your letter, Attorney General to the Chair, which was very helpful as a kind of an overarching position of the report and the, the reports that have been done. Um I just want to tease something out because there's a degree of ambiguity about it and I just want to get clarification from you. It says, this audit also examined the effectiveness of the New South Wales Procurement Board in fulfilling its functions to oversee and support agency procurement of consulting services. The report noted that the board is not fully effective in overseeing and supporting agencies' procurement of consulting services. The board's oversight of agency and supplier compliance with the standard commercial framework is limited as it relies on self-reporting and the information provider is insufficient to properly monitor compliance. Does that mean that the inability of the board to carry out its role is solely due to the lack of transparency and qualitative nature of the data? Or does it also mean that, notwithstanding that they're still deficient?
So uh to be clear, that was a twenty eighteen report. Uh I think I'll defer to Ms. Magotto, but I think there has been some improvement. Uh but we've still identified gaps.
Yes, and I, I think one of the uh key gaps that we identified um is the lack of implementation of the agency's stated response to the recommendation about implementing a vendor management system, which would have provided greater visibility perhaps to entities like the procurement board. Uh but I think it's a bit difficult to dissociate the effectiveness of the board from the effectiveness of the, the data and the potential for data leakage that's occurring uh before, before the board's consideration.
We are running out of time. I will just ask one final question to wrap this up, if I may. Um you have been very um diplomatic uh in your um responses here. When I read the twenty twenty three report, I sensed a real frustration over just how difficult it is to actually work out how much the New South Wales Government is spending on consultants. And uh Mr. Goodman, you've talked about, you know, just transparency, we should know this stuff. If I went out to, you know, a person on the street and just asked them randomly, um they, I, I suspect, and certainly how I feel, that there should, there should be somebody somewhere within the New South Wales Government who can say, in this financial year, we had this much money that went from our accounts to PWC and from our accounts to KPMG, from our accounts to whoever. Is that available somewhere? I know that you have not been able to get hold of it. But is it something that someone, say in Treasury, could just look into their accounts and say, this is how much we spent?
I, I, I think it's fair to say that the ex, our expectation would be that procurement New South Wales attempts to do that um by pulling together the different sources of information to present a full picture. Um there are judgments though involved in the categorization of various engagements, et cetera. So it's not, so the frustration that we might feel is probably similarly felt uh with management of uh in, within government agencies. It's the same frustration. Um so, but we would expect that procurement New South Wales would do better in analyzing the data. I mean, I think we, our audit demonstrated that it was possible um to bring that all together into one, one place.
Whether you call it consulting or contracting or whatever you call it, someone must know how much we have given to the big consulting firms.
Yeah, and we think that should be um procurement New South Wales.
Thank you. Um well, thank you very much, that is all we have time for. Um that has been incredibly useful and thank you again for all of your reports and, and for attending and for everything that you, um that you do in this space. Um we may have additional questions for you after the hearing. We've resolved that the answers to those, along with any answers you took on notice today, um will be returned within twenty one days and the Secretary will be in contact um to do, to discuss that. Um we are going to take a lunch break now, we will be back at one thirty with the Department of Health.
We're good, excellent. Hello and welcome back. I now welcome our next witnesses from New South Wales Health. If I could start by asking you to please state your name, position, title, and then swear either an oath or affirmation.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Alpha Damato and I'm the Deputy Secretary of the Financial Services and Asset Management Division and I, the CFO. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair. Philip Gregory Minns, the Deputy Secretary for People, Culture and Governance in the Ministry of Health. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
Thank you so much. Just before I ask you to start with making a short statement. The, just to let you know that the committee resolved earlier that in relation to this particular session, if we could have a shorter period of time for returning answers to questions taken on notice and supplementary questions. So that will be due back by the 23rd of this month instead of the usual 21 days. But yes, if I could start by asking you to make a short statement and trying to keep it as short as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Committee. Thank you for the opportunity to appear in front of the Committee. I am the Deputy Secretary of the Financial Services and Asset Management Division within the Ministry of Health and the Chief Financial Officer. The Financial Services Division and Asset Management Division has a strategic oversight across the procurement of goods and services within New South Wales Health. As leaders and enablers of better practice, the Division's key objective is to maximise value across New South Wales Health. The Division provides support with respect to governance, regulatory compliance, and strategic direction for all New South Wales Health entities. New South Wales Health conducts its procurement in accordance with its obligation to ensure value for money, improve competition, and facilitate access to government business, particularly by small and medium enterprises and regional enterprises. This includes consideration for various factors, including cost, quality, capability, and capacity. New South Wales operates under a developed procurement model, which strong, with strong oversight from the Ministry of Health, strategic procurement branch through policy settings, compliance activity, training, and guidance. Share service entities such as HealthShare New South Wales and eHealth New South Wales lead tactical and operational procurements. Health infrastructure leads the delivery of New South Wales Health capital projects. And, and local districts and specialty networks operationalise statewide contracts and manage local procurement according to business needs. I'd like to acknowledge the Audit Office report into the use and management of consultants by New South Wales Government Agencies released on the 2nd March 2023. While New South Wales Health was not one of the agencies that participated in that review, it welcomes the Auditor General's recommendations to improve the classes but the practices in relation to engagement of consultants. Also, I'd add that in 2020, New South Wales Health commenced a reform of its procurement framework and governance. And reform programmes is focused on five work streams: sourcing, sourcing and contracts, data flow, supply chain traceability, business intelligence and analytics, and in transitioning all procurement activity into a statewide platform. This will create a, a single end-to-end centralised procurement system with a single source of truth for all data. The procurement reform programme is ongoing. Through this programme of works, I'm confident that New South Wales Health will address the concerns of both the Auditor General's recent report and those of the Committee. I share the ambition of the Committee to make sure that we are properly balanced the long-term social, economic, and environmental interests of the state and make sure our resources are used wisely and responsibly. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. If we could perhaps commence questions just with some basics around New South Wales Health's total spend on consulting. Are you able to tell us how much health is spent on consulting firms since 2011?
Since 2011, I need to take that on notice, but what I can tell you that what we spent last year and there was a report in the annual report for consultants is 6.3 million, 6.372, and this includes consultancies less than $50,000 and above $50,000, which are disclosed and itemised in our annual, annual report.
Great. So that's 21, 22?
That's 20, 2021.
2021.
That's great.
Calendar year or financial year?
Financial year. In respect of 2021, sorry, 21, 22, just get this figure for you two. The total was 3.7 million.
3.7 million. So that account, that's, that's sort of accords with, I've been through the, the annual reports and I, I think it's around 29 million all up. But if you could come back on, on notice, that would be, that would be great.
And just want to make a note, in regards to the consolidated reports, we always report the results for the state at consolidated level, New South Wales Health. As you mentioned, the 22.2 million, and this is, they all spend across all entities. But we itemise only the components relative to the parent, which is the, the ministry. I understand that the Auditor General this morning also addressed the fact that there has been changes. And from next year, we're looking at implementing these changes and therefore we'll be able to itemise the spend across the whole system in our annual report.
So are you aware then of how much the local health districts have spent on consultants since 2011?
Since 2011, I need to get back to you. I don't have the figures since then.
As, just as a matter of, of course, would, although that we, you know, the Auditor General was saying it's very difficult for her to find the, the total spend on consultants from these local health districts, presumably New South Wales Health has that data readily available. I understand you haven't brought it here today, but that is readily available?
It is, but I do want to make a comment that each individual local health district prepares a financial statement which is publicly available and they report the spend on consultancies for each district. So there is publicly available. What is not available is the itemised details that we make available for the ministry at the moment, as has been the practice and the compliance with what has been requested.
Understood. So if I could just table so that you can, I might need to get a copy of that, apologies. My office went through and, and went through all of those annual reports and for each of the local health districts and we came up with a figure of $124 million over since, since basically since 2011. If I could ask you just on notice to take that figure, that, that sheet away and come back and just confirm whether or not that is the correct amount, that would be very useful. So.
Purpose, that, those figures you quoted for FY '21 and '22 are direct ministerial expenditures on consultants as opposed to the LHDs, is that correct?
So what we do report in the annual report to amounts. One is the parent being the ministry and the other is the consolidated results. The consolidated includes everything, all the districts and pillars and agencies and entities.
Yep.
So the difference between the two with account for all other entities, which I presume is what is in this table that has been.
Okay. Yep.
So, and this is available by just going through, as I suppose has been done on the internet, every single district publishes the financial statement.
So for comparison then, if we look at that table, we have Ministry of Health spending just over 6 million in the 21, sorry, 20 to 21 financial year. Whereas we have the local health district spending 15 million in that year just over. Similarly, we have in 21, 22, ministry, sort of from a ministry level, health spending 3.7 million in consultants. But we have 14.225 million being spent by the local health districts.
Okay. So if I may, I'd like to clarify the fact that what you're looking at is a subset of all the entities. In that it doesn't include some of the shared services, for instance, and there would have been otherwise reporting a consolidated results.
So your consolidated results also include
Everything.
our health agency, oh sorry, what's it called?
HealthShare.
HealthShare, thank you. E-Health.
Yep.
All of those is in your figures.
That's correct.
Just not the LHDs.
I'm sorry. The LHD is a subset of the consolidated numbers. So when you look at the annual report currently, for instance, for 21, 22, consolidated, we reported 22.2 million total spend.
Yep.
So if you then take the ministry out of that, you can't compare the balance to what you got here because there still are the agencies missing.
I understand.
Yeah.
But we still have a rather large percentage of that total spend is being spent by the local health districts or at that level, correct?
It's correct, but also worth noting that the total budget over these years for the local districts will be around 300 billion.
Mm-hmm.
300?
Well, it's on average around 20 to 24 billion a year, the district's only component. So if you look that as a denominator, this looks like more like something 0.03 or 0.3, 0.5.
So what is the Ministry of Health's budget in that period?
Well, the, the Ministry of Health, as in the New South Wales Health budget this year, 22, 23, is 33.5 billion. Of that, there is 3 billion of capital and the balance is recurrent.
Yes.
So if you look at the growth and what has been published in the papers, the budget papers over the last 11 years, since this data has been collected, you can aggregate the whole lot and use.
But just by way of sort of understanding though, how much would the local health districts be responsible for in terms of the budget spend as a percentage, give or take?
Give or take, I say between 65 and 70%, if no more at times. It depends, you know, for instance, if you take the COVID years, there might be a little bit more as a result of the way we deploy some of the results.
65 to 70%?
I say, yeah.
So can I just clarify then, so when you are, just correct me if I'm wrong. So, so we're saying, yes, the local health districts are, you know, 75% of the total spend of health overall in its consulting spend, but you're saying that's proportionate to the, the budget that those local health districts run compared to the rest of health? Is that the point that was being made just then?
That's my, my answer was related to the overall proportion of the budget that is deployed to districts and networks.
Okay. The spend just last year from the local health districts, just to put it in a different comparison or a different light, the spend just from the local health districts, not including the rest of health in the last year on consultants was more than education DPC and DPE spent together, so combined. So that's still objectively quite a large consulting spend from these local health districts. Wouldn't you agree?
Look, I need to check the figures from education and what has been reported in education. I think as it's been noted this morning from, by the Auditor General, there is some if you want inconsistency in the way where different classes are reporting. So I need to just check that the figures you quoted are comparable to what we have reported here.
Does New South Wales Health have any visibility around how much additional money is also being spent on contractors where those contractors are consulting firms?
Yes, if you just allow me, I just got the data in front of me. And in regards to the question, sorry, just one second. The question, sorry, just one second. Um, six point four million.
So six point four million.
This is for twenty one, twenty two.
For twenty one, twenty two.
Yes.
Was spent on contractors.
Was reported in the contractor spend.
Mm hmm.
Uh, in respect to some of the big fours, uh consulting firms. I guess I just want to.
Was that local health district level or was that?
Can't tell you that, I don't have the level of details, I just got the aggregate at the moment.
Okay, so, so there was three point seven million spent last year at a consolidated. Sorry, not a consolidated level. What was the spend last year on contractor cross, sorry, uh consultants across health? It was twenty.
Twenty two point two.
Twenty two point two million.
Yes.
And then you're saying an additional six point four million um was also given to the big four. For what was classified as contracting rather than consulting.
That's correct, and I'd like to refer back to the definition of consultancy is also provided in the Audit General uh report. And it's clear that the um consultants, and particularly in regards to also how the procurement board defines consultants. Uh, those engage for professional advice and all recommendations. And so then the definition between the difference between consultant and contractors, which I believe also the Audit General report calls out. Can be a little bit difficult time.
Yeah.
But we do uh have a statewide guideline.
Hmm.
For health, the support supported by a procurement policy to make sure that we can capture correctly what is uh. As a an advisory uh consultancy versus contractors.
So just to drill down into what that might look like in practice then, um something like, so I understand the Q D O S Arena. Um, immunization or vaccination hub was actually run for the Western Sydney Local Health District by P W C. Um, would that have been classified as a contracting service or as a consulting service?
Look, I need to confirm the details, but just in respect to, um as you said at the very beginning this morning. At times we need to uh engage consultants for, because we need something uh be done quickly.
Hmm.
Uh, that's most likely than not that it could be a contracting rather than a consulting.
And I think we can apply a, you know, a slightly different lens to the way that we view activities during Covid, which was particularly for for health or particularly. Um, uh unusual um set of circumstances uh where things needed to be done in a rush. I'm just curious, do you have any other examples then of the type of spend on consultant, sorry, on consulting firms? That would be classified as contracting as opposed to consulting?
So Chair, I could give you a couple from my own context that uh occurred during the Covid period. So one of the things we had to do was plan for um catastrophic workforce outcomes. So if we experienced what was experienced in Europe or the United States in our health system, we would run out of a clinical workforce. So we had um a strategy around all of our options to surge workforce. But particularly, we landed on um how we could bring people who'd lost employment elsewhere in the state. How we could bring them in, make them resources that could assist the clinicians who we still had. Now, we never actually had to fully execute that plan, thankfully, but we had to develop it and we had to screen. And get employment ready, um several thousand potential employees. Now, we used a our external firm to do that because we did not have that scale in any of the districts or in the ministry. So it was a classic case of extreme need, um we need capability, we need it very quickly.
Related point, Chair, on that previous P W C example, where they're ostensibly contracting for Q D O S. We, is there any probity oversight from the department to ensure that. The potential for advice from the same firm isn't conflictual on then a subsequent um contract?
I need to double check, I mean, I have to admit that what we put in place during Covid is probably slightly different to what would norma normally occur. On top of that, I also would like to uh state that we have uh. We have a new procurement policy, which has been put in place since June last year. Uh, so it's likely that that might have been after, you know, the Q D O S Arena, so I just need to get back to it.
That'd be good. So if we could have pre and post any probity measures that either didn't exist or now exist and. Because you you see the potential for, obviously, and it was raised this morning in evidence from the Audit General as well, yeah.
Could I ask, Chair, through you, a a follow up question, but maybe take it, take it broader again? So I'm just trying to understand, so in your opening statement, Mr. Tomato, you spoke about. Um, the ministry providing strong oversight of arrangements. And my understanding, there is responsibility for for monitoring and compliance, but yet there's a devolved system.
Yep.
So could you, you know, in in the shortest possible way, give me an explanation of of how that works? Both the oversight, but the devolution, there seems to be a bit of a tension there that I don't quite understand.
Sure, I, if if I can, Dr. Kane, I'll talk about the devolved governance arrangement. So, you know, you're familiar that we have local health districts, it's a feature of the National Health Reform Agreement. Um, dating back to probably about twenty eleven, twenty twelve. Um, the New South Wales response to that is the fifteen local health districts and the two specialty networks. And, you know, it's quite clear under that national framework that those local networks have to manage their own budget in accordance with state financial and audit requirements. So they should not be characterized and seen as branches or divisions of the Ministry of Health. They are not. They are statutory corporations under the Health Services Act. And so they are, they have a requirement, both in terms of the policies that Alpha's team maintains and and implements. As well as the requirements of Treasury and the Procurement Board to actually operate within that framework. And one of the things that my area requires them to do each year is to um develop an attestation statement. As a executive of the district with the board and signed by the board chair. That goes to the seven features of um our governance framework that they need to monitor. And attest that they have, in fact, executed. So that's how the governance piece works and. Alpha can explain um the oversight on procurement.
Thank you.
Thank you, Phil, and thank you, Dr. Kane. Uh, what I wanted to mention is that obviously a policy um has been. Recently launched in twenty one, uh sorry, in June last year. Uh, this document is the only policy applicable to all health entities. And it clearly spells out roles and responsibilities as well as the expectations when it comes to uh all the procurement aspects. Whether sourcing, planning and contract management as well. There's been a a lot of consultations internally. And I believe this policy, which is complemented with the uh procedure document, uh provides sufficient details to health entities. In respect to uh how to approach procurement in all respects as well as consultants.
Can I ask, that that new policy came in last year.
Yeah.
Uh, it it would appear that that the new, well, new policies often come in to fix deficiencies in previous policies. Could you explain what it was that you were attempting to do with the new policy that perhaps wasn't there in previous policies?
Uh, look, I think the main thing we wanted to achieve was, first of all, there was a noted um conduct on our contract management. And it triggered the all procurement reform approach from our end, uh which has given us great opportunities, not only to resolve the contract management. To take a broader look at all procurement aspects. In first instance, I think one of the the key challenges I wanted to resolve. Was in regards roles and responsibilities. So for instance, we have shared services around not only the procurement, but also in respect to I C T and the capital. So this policy creates a very clear expectations in regards when they to use statewide contracts. When they to use shared service models and when to yet to use I C T, for instance, as E L being the category manager for that particular uh sourcing. So that's what we really tried to explain. Then we took the opportunity not only to emphasize and. If you want to expand on some of the aspects, in particular when it comes to um the. Uh, if you want, what I call the, and I was also referred this morning, uh the getting started. So i- i- in identity, in setting up all the steps, we we really want to focus the. Uh, the the branches or districts to identify what are the business needs. So that at that point, we can be clear on what is the way set as objectives. Uh, but also they have clear steps in regards to what they need to be considered around sustainability, resource efficiencies. Calculating and estimating the contract value, which goes back to the core of this concept of contra variation. And so we also put in place steps, uh proactive steps, to make sure that when there is an engagement, there is clear. Opportunity at the very, very beginning to understand what is the possible extent of the engagement. So that we can avoid contra variation and we have steps in regards to how to address contra variation.
And there wasn't a process in place before to do that?
There were, there was another policy before, uh but this probably details further all these steps. So we remove any interpretation as much as possible. Again, two months old, we're looking at the a review. Uh, this policy came with strong change management as well, so there are lots of training sessions conducted when we introduce this policy. And to support this policy, we also have put a lot of effort in the Procurement Academy. Which is a training session that all our procurement leads need to go through in order to comply with this policy.
Perhaps we can look at just a couple of examples of of post.
Can I just quickly check, because it was a related point um on the evidence, the attestations of the self assessment model? Are you aware of any scrutiny by the Procurement Board on these attestations or are they just taken at face value? Can you, can you recall any examples where the Procurement Boards come back to, to an L H D or the department and said, well. Actually, we want to drill down into this a bit?
Uh, I'm not familiar with one, but we can take it on notice and seek to confirm. Thanks.
Um, so just going to a couple of of recent contracts that have been um. Entered into by health agencies since that um update to to policy. So let's start with, I'm looking at, so these are both ambulance service of New South Wales contracts. Um, I'm looking at one from the fourth of October last year. Um, this is a notification of a. An amended contract from, so it's looking at September twenty twenty two to twenty twenty three. Uh, it is with Deloitte uh in relation to the SWIFT program.
Yeah.
Uh, it's for an amount of one point eight three six six four nine. Um, wow, yeah, so one point eight million dollars. Um, can you tell us what that was for and why it was needed to go to an external provider?
Uh, look, I probably need to go back to the details of the particular contract. But from what I'm familiar with in regards to the overall program is about additional um ambulance stations. Uh, that were announced in this year's budget and that program of work is the implementation part. But as I say, I just need to go back to it and look, we're looking at around thirty new stations across the state, so.
So this, yeah, so this particular one is in relation to the establishment of a of a program management office. Um, and then a government, governance and performance monitoring framework. Um, I understand that this went out on limited tender. I'm interested in knowing um why that was, I guess, for such a huge amount. Um, but also, you know, did that limited tender lead to more than just Deloitte um putting in um for the work? Um, and I also understand that there have been a number of concerns raised in relation to the this product of of that work. Um, and I can put some more questions in on on notice. Um, but it does raise the question of. How do you assess value for money within health?
Yeah.
Um, when looking at these sorts of projects?
Okay, so first I'll take that on notice in respect to the details of the particular engagement, because I like to check with the Chief Procurement Officer. In regards to assessment value for money, there is again documenting the policy and clearly spells out in the procedures. On what is that we're looking for and effectively it is a balanced approach. Uh, where we mitigate risks and balance the opportunities to deliver on the outcomes that that. Just going back to the section here.
Just while you're doing that, can you just also clarify, my my understanding is that. A limited tender for a one point eight million dollar contract is just a breach of the procurement rules, is it not?
Well, it depends whether the limited tender, what do you mean by that? But as I say, I'm more than happy to have a look at the details of the particular uh.
That, and yeah, I'll just mention the other one I have here in front of me as well. So this one is the twenty eighth of November twenty twenty two. Again, this is um through ambulance service of New South Wales. Um, and this is the, yeah, it's kind of a rostering and resource planning um. System, which again has has been subject to quite a lot of criticism. Um, it's with Price Waterhouse Coopers. Uh, it is for just over one million dollars and again was done with limited tender. Um, if you could find out for us um on notice, who else put in for that work? Um, but also particularly, there is a a section here where they talk about the evaluation criteria. They've given a twenty percent weighting um for the criteria against which the tender was assessed. Um, twenty percent weighting for demonstrated skills and experience of key personnel um proposed to work on the project. That's surprising in something where it looks like it didn't actually go out to a broad tender. Um, it it looks and smells like something where it's uh, it's really just gone out to one, to one particular um firm. And partner that they knew uh wanted the work. So if you could come back on that one, um that would be very useful, Chair.
To the Chair's point in the limited tendering scenario, who makes the determination of it being a limited tender? And then who's the final approver on that point?
The C P O, the Chief Procurement Officer reports to me, I'll be the one in charge of making the assessment and.
So in that regards, that's across New South Wales Health or is that for New South Wales Ambulance?
Nisotos Health.
Okay.
Yeah.
Chair, I was just going to make a point that that I don't know the details of that ambulance matter. Um, Alpha's will come back with the information as requested. But that clause relating to key personnel who will work on the project, uh you'll probably find it's it's relatively common. Um, as a condition across the sector, because there's a desire to know that um. You're buying the expertise of the people who you think you're buying the expertise of. Such that you don't, you don't engage with and decide on a tender bid that you would like to use this firm. In this instance, because of the history of the people that they put forward on their team, to then discover that a different team arrives to deliver the work. Alright, so it's it's a, I I don't think it's an unusual clause in its own right, but that's just a general comment, we'll come back with.
And I imagine part of that's weighted as well, like there is, so if you've got a partner, for instance, who's working on a project compared to having five juniors, for instance. That's one of the considerations as to whether you're going to get value for money and whether you're going to be getting the sort of advice that you're looking for.
Yeah, you you're keen to understand that um you receive what was sold to you in terms of expertise, so. And I think Alpha mentioned in his opening statement that. Or we may have mentioned it in our response to various media inquiries, you know, there's two broad reasons why we will seek to use consultants. One is they bring an expertise that is not commonly executed in our organization, so they're they're more across the detail than we are. And the other is the one where we've already given an example about um acute capability needs and we need to scale quickly.
But I think the concern from the evidence we've heard so far is that. How does the Procurement Board, for example, know that when you go to Price Waterhouse Coopers and say, we want a roster system developed for. Ambulance drivers or whatever it was, how does the Procurement Board know? That the relevant inquiries were made as to the qualitative expertise within P W C would be. The same that we used before, for example, on a previous project. You don't, we don't, this is the problem, isn't it? There's no transparency over the decision making.
Well, there is transparency for the people who make the decision in the in the tender evaluation process. And, you know, before we let a tender, our procedures require us to have a tender evaluation strategy signed off. So, you know, we don't start procurement without a clear sense of what we're looking for and how we're going to evaluate um value. And um capability and and likely success of the project. So that that would have happened in New South Wales Ambulance, um we'll have to go and look at the case, but. Uh, the the Procurement Board itself, sitting at the whole of state level. Um, it it will, it does not have the internal capacity to try and look at every one of these decisions. I mean, you've, you've seen from the numbers that, you know, there's, there's a usage level in health that is is high. It's, you know, it's needed and so we we make use of consultants.
But there's no script, there's no, my point is, there's no machinery of government that goes, okay. Let's look at this P W C case, when the decision was made to give it to them to do the ambulance rosters. When the decision was made to give it to them to do the ambulance rosters, were there relevant inquiries made as to the skill set and the experience based on our previous experience?
If they, if they used our procurement framework even before the refresh.
Yep.
They would have done that work.
Let me get back to you with the details on the particular.
That would be very useful. And just on that, also, you know, I take your point around the demonstrated skills and experience of key personnel proposed. We didn't see it in the other tender that I, that I raised. It's, you know, it, it stuck out. If you could perhaps, you know, if that's just something that, that is sort of every contract just has it regardless, I'd, I'd like to know a bit more about how many contracts across New South Wales Health do have that as a, as a criteria that was evaluated. But in any case, if you could come back, that would be great.
Chair, sorry to interrupt, if I may, just further to your inquiry in regards to the limited tender. In the current policy, which I believe is also the procurement requirement, anything between two hundred and fifty thousand and thirty million requires three quotes. So that's the limited.
So if you could come back and let us know if anyone else tended for that and who they were, that would be very useful. And then just coming back to that point of, you know, one of the main concerns that have been raised in relation to the, the potential overuse and overreliance of government on consulting firms is this usage for things that really should be within the core functions of government departments. When we're looking at these ambulance contracts in particular, you know, this SWIFT one, one point eight million dollars for Deloitte, that is to determine the best location of ambulance stations, as far as I can tell, or for the, for the, the central sort of management of where ambulances should go across the state. How do we not have that capacity within New South Wales Health or New South Wales Ambulance? That seems like a very core function of, of health in this state, don't you think?
Well, I think ambulance will have a view about how it needs to organise its, its future network of stations. We, both Alpha and I, you know, have not had any involvement in that tender matter. We, we need to see what, what they have requested, which we're happy to do.
Needs analysis done to say that you needed to procure it outside of the service?
Yeah, but you know, like ambulance is certainly not in the business of trying to understand real estate values across New South Wales. And, you know, purchasing land to build stations will be a big aspect of this programme. That's not a core capability.
So there would be guidelines that would have been provided to people who were looking at developing this needs analysis?
I, I, I think we need to go and look at the case.
Well, no, I, I'm, I'm just trying to understand if people, that New South Wales Health procurement procedures encourage staff to undertake a needs analysis. So there must be guidelines that were used to enable them to do that.
Yes.
And there must be, staff are also required to access value for money in line with the New South Wales procurement board definition. So there must be guidelines.
Yep, absolutely.
Provided for them. Can we get a copy of those?
And I think that the answer is likely to be more in regards to the standard commercial framework, which is managed by procurement in New South Wales, which allows to enter in these contracts with the limited tender approaches, where they specify the cap rates and what is the mix, so the value in respect to the consultancy.
I, I would, I would like a copy of those guidelines that are given to staff.
Because we're talking about a one point eight million dollar contract here, you would think at least at some point ambulance had, and my understanding is that even though it's a, you know, an ambulance contract, it is something that New South Wales Health has to sign off on ultimately, you would assume that a needs analysis of some sort had been put up to a higher level before this got signed off. This is a significant percentage of that ministry spend.
If I can add just two, two comments. One is that all the frameworks are in the policy and more than happy to provide the policy than the procedures. The other part I also think we need to acknowledge is the complexity around the, the, as I understand, the thirty stations and how these had to be deployed so that they could improve the performance, ambulance performance. So I'm not an expert at that, so I'm more than happy to take that notice, but I do need to acknowledge the complexity on the piece of work from ambulance side and the fact that ambulance in New South Wales is not in the business, as Phil has mentioned, to, to do this on a day-to-day basis.
You would think that the personnel, though, within the ambulance service would be very well-placed to help advise on that, and my understanding is they've not even consulted.
Can I just confirm that we're getting, you're taking on notice to give us those guidelines? Okay.
Through the chair, could I take us back a step? And it might be another one where we're given something afterwards. Mr. Minz, you spoke about evaluation as being part of the process. We heard this morning from the Auditor General that evaluation of consultancy engagement was not done very well. In fact, it wasn't done in the majority of cases. And I know you're, that health wasn't part of that, but I wondered if you could explain a bit what the evaluation process is and perhaps provide us with some examples that can be taken and brought back to us.
Yeah, so just to clarify, I was referring to the, the tender bid evaluation process that's at the front end.
Yep.
I think Alpha's procurement team is best able to advise on evaluations at the end. In, in some cases, you, you know, you would take the view that an evaluation is not likely to add any particular value because you wanted a product from the consulting project and the product was delivered.
Except that it's a requirement. It's a requirement, isn't it, of the New South Wales procurement guidelines?
But it might be a very brief process in some instances. So, you know, if, if you requested a piece of advice with a report that had a series of recommendations around two competing options and you got the report, well, you know, there's, there's not a significant long-term evaluation there. There perhaps is in three years' time when you say, we took the advice and we, and we acted on it.
So for an activity like the PWC, kudos, oh, that was the contractors, but for, for a consultancy of that scale, so you're saying for you, it's more a threshold issue, so a bigger contract you would, you would hold an evaluation for, but smaller ones which are more a report or something?
It's, I, I really would have to defer to Alpha there because it's within the CPO's role.
Sure, thank you.
Can I ask?
Can we just let, we, Mr. Tomato was about to respond.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can we just let Mr. Tomato respond?
I'll be quick.
No, no, it's okay, it's just our overzealousness.
In, in respect to the evaluation, as I mentioned before, the, the implementation of the new procurement policy allowed us also to focus on the contract management aspects of the procurement. And that is where we focus also on training and the procurement academy, because I think that the evaluation component is also, if you want to, reliant on the contract management aspect or whatever we sign.
Yes, but in terms of what the practice has been, I understand that you've got a new policy. What, what has, just because we heard this morning from the Auditor General that in other circumstances, and we don't have that transparency with health because we didn't, you weren't part of the audit. So in your understanding, historically, the evaluation process as opposed to what the policy says going forward?
No, that's okay. And look, I guess, again, I need to have a look at the details and I've asked the team to look into the details, but probably the most important part is that we do believe and we're working with Treasury Procurement in New South Wales in regards to the VMS, the vendor management system, because we believe that could actually resolve and streamline the process in regards not only to manage the contracts, but also to provide and ensure that we can monitor the evaluation that's being performed in accordance to the policy.
Perhaps we could just ask you to come back on notice with the percentage of consulting contracts where a post-engagement evaluation has been undertaken? And also how many of them were seen to be unsatisfactory? That would be very useful. Mrs. Carter?
Thank you, Chair. I, I just wanted to take you back, Mr. Minz, I wanted to clarify that point about evaluation because I think I understood that what you were saying was that depending on the nature of the engagement, the right time to evaluate may be on delivery or may actually be after a period of three years when you've been able to see the quality of the advice as you've been implementing. So it may not be as straightforward as evaluating at the time of delivery. If you could just confirm that.
That's, that's a good rendition of what I was seeking to say.
Touch on one of your points.
Yes.
Just want to drill down on one of the points that the chair's made previously about personnel and the use of internal subject matter expertise in some of these projects. And the ambulance one is, is one example, nurses' rosters presumably is another. But I just want to get a feel for, is there any process prior to and during these outsourcing events where you're getting consultants to tell you about rosters and whatnot? Is there any hard and fast process whereby there's an obligation to engage with the people at the user end and consult them as well? Because it seems to me there'd be a lot of efficiencies from actually talking to the people who live and breathe it every day.
So generally, if we are engaging a consultant and it's a significant piece of work that touches part of the system or the whole system, one of the features of the design of the engagement that we'll seek a response for in bids is how are you going to consult with key stakeholders in the system? So it's very rare that we would use a consultant to provide their subject matter expertise without reference to any of the internal stakeholders who hold knowledge and expertise. It'd be pretty rare if, if it happens at all. So a, a significant part of several of the workforce-related projects that we have run both pre and during COVID has been the engagement phase with members of our workforce and representatives of our workforce.
Okay.
Can I ask, and if you could take this on notice just before I, I turn to the local health district structure again, if you could just maybe take on notice what your average annual spend was on consulting firms prior to two thousand and eleven, when those health reforms came through? That would be very useful, just maybe in the five years prior. So.
Chair, if I could clarify that, we, we will be able to give you a global number, but because we moved from a different structural base of area health services to the fifteen LHDs, I think there'll be quite a lot of, you know, difference in what we're measuring in those.
Understood. If we could, yeah, maybe just state the limitations in the answer so that we can work out how we might or might not compare it. Which consultants were involved in advising on those New South Wales health reforms in two thousand and eleven?
I cannot answer that, Chair. We can take it on notice, I imagine we can find out, but.
I'll, yeah, let me help. So, and then if you could maybe come back and confirm this. So one of the consultants involved was KPMG. So KPMG was contracted to consult on the future arrangements for governance of New South Wales Health Report, which was released by the then Director General Mary Foley in two thousand and eleven. That was actually hard to find because the, that report had been put out by the secretary at the time under her own name, but she, during that, she credited a Mr. Solomon as providing input into it. And it's not mentioned in the report, but at the time that he was providing that input, he was the National Health Lead for KPMG. And then a little bit of further analysis leads you to find the, the actual tender and the, the information in the Health's annual report at the time that talks about that, the, the contract they had with KPMG of that same name. So if you could maybe go and, and dig through that to provide confirmation that that's indeed what that was, that would be very useful. In that report, the, the report says that the minister has announced new appointments to these local health boards, is for, to prepare them, to equip them for the task ahead, especially in relation to financial and governance capability. And Gillian Skinner, who was the, obviously the Health Minister at the time, in her second read, when she introduced the bill for this new structure for local health districts, also said that she'll undertake a review of the appointments to assure herself that each board does have the appropriate mix of skills in its membership. When we look at two thousand and twelve, and I was talking with the Auditor General about this earlier, we, we look at the very similar reforms that happened in the UK. The experience there was that we saw a real, almost like these, these local boards were being set up to fail because they didn't have that expertise. And the only way that they could get that financial expertise was by consulting out to external parties. And it's with that lens that we then look at our own reforms in New South Wales and that devolution of structure and how we then end up with needing, I guess, a, a higher level of financial expertise in, in these boards that were originally conceived as being a, a way to input community and clinician feedback back into the structure. It's a very potted summary, but I guess my question to you is, seeing the reporting and the scandals that came out, particularly in relation to McKinsey, who was involved in that original, you know, I guess, giving advice on the structure of the NHS reforms, seeing that the same structure had been up, like put in place in two thousand and eleven, did health share those concerns that we would be setting these local health boards up to rely on external consultants in order to meet their financial obligations?
Chair, I can't comment. I, I joined health in twenty seventeen. I have a significant set of issues understanding our, our context, so I haven't explored the NHS experience. And, you know, you, you'd really have to try and speak to people who were advising the minister at the time, and I don't even know who they are, I'm sorry.
And I, and I fully intend to in, in a future hearing. I guess, I'm curious though, knowing, you know, I've, I've read ICAC's report into managing conflicts of interest, for example, and it steps out very clearly, the additional steps that agencies should take in circumstances where conflicts of interest are likely to be a problem. Given what had happened in the UK, given the very high numbers of ex-consultants involved in, in the Health Department more generally, on these boards and executive roles in local health districts, did health take any proactive measures to ensure that these boards wouldn't end up being reliant on external consultants?
I can't content, comment, I don't have any historical context. I do know that, you know, the Act specifies that we need to seek certain capabilities from boards in, in terms of membership. So the reason why they are sort of in that range of, I think it's six to thirteen in their membership construct, is to see if we can get broad capability into the board membership. And one of them is definitely about financial agility and acumen. So, but as to what happened at the time, I'm sorry, I, I can't be a reliable witness.
Are you aware that PWC was also involved in advising on those structural reforms in two thousand and eleven?
I have no historical knowledge of what happened.
They presented a preliminary costing of efficiency opportunities report that went into that sort of governance and structure. Now, that happened, I think, end of two thousand and eleven, early two thousand and twelve. At the time, Mary Foley was the Secretary and Director General of New South Wales Health. Just prior to her being appointed in two thousand and eleven, she had been the National Health Practice Leader for PWC Australia. She'd gone straight from that health practice role at PWC Australia into the New South Wales Government as our highest public servant in New South Wales Health. And then we have advice coming in from PWC on restructuring our Health Department and structure. Did health ever think that that would lead to a potential conflicts of interest or a situation where the resulting structure might lead these boards to become reliant on external consultants?
I'm sorry, I cannot comment, Chair. The only point I'd make is that I, I don't think our boards, if you were to talk to them, if you were to talk to the chairs of our boards, I don't think they would describe themselves as being reliant on external consultants. And in large, in large measure, they're not the ones procuring them.
And yet they're spending a hundred and twenty-seven million dollars over the last eleven years to manage, this is just in what we know, this is just consultants doing consulting work for these local health districts.
Yeah, in the context of a very significant overall budget spend that they're also managing.
They're spending more than the Department of Education, DPC and DPE altogether combined. There's a massive spend coming out of the Health Department through these LHDs on There's a massive spend coming out of the Health Department through these L H Ds on consultants, which is largely going under the radar because it's not being reported back up. It's not something that the auditor has any oversight over. Does that structurally not create concerns for Health generally? That it's getting the best value for money out of these consulting contracts? You have ultimate sign-off as the head agency.
Well, we don't sign off their procurement decisions. That, that is not how our governance structure works. What we expect is that the local management and the L H D board will ensure that they follow all of the relevant procedures that are meant to guide their procurement decisions. But we do not stamp them in, in the centre.
One of those, I understand that the, the boards are appointed by the minister at the time, so those appointments are made by the minister at the time. The chair is appointed by the board as a whole but signed off by the secretary.
No, the, the chair is appointed by the minister also.
Okay, so chair's appointed by the minister.
The deputy chair who can be, I'd have to check, actually.
Okay. But anyway, there is a significant political involvement in the appointment on those boards. The Health Secretary is also appointing the, you know, the executives. And, and I think, as I, I'm not sure if I mentioned this to Attorney General earlier or not, but, you know, a quick Google search can discover a lot of employees at these local health districts coming straight from health, health positions within P W C, K P M G, E Y, Deloitte. Because of that, sort of, I guess, the, you know, Health's overall responsibility for who's sitting on those boards, what steps has Health taken to ensure that those, those boards are acting independently and are getting best value for money from consultants?
So there's a governance compendium, which we're happy to table for the committee, that, that really is guidance and direction to all of the board chairs and the board members. And it deals with seven critical aspects that the attestation, you know, reports on. So when we look at how boards get appointments made and how they get refreshed, it is subject to the, the approach that the Minister of the Day would like to take. But broadly speaking, we, we do an expression of interest and we probably do it every two to three years to have a refreshed panel of people who've got an interest in being on a health district board. If, you know, we make that information available to the Minister of the Day, the Minister of the Day will determine how they want to then proceed to make appointments that are subject to Cabinet approval. So, and, and just one final point that, which I've forgotten, so back to your question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me know if you think of it, but the, that compendium I've, I've looked at, there is a very small part in there in relation to conflicts of interest. It's basically just, you need to disclose your conflict of interest. If you go on to look at the ICAC recommendations in relation to avoiding corrupt conduct in relation to conflicts of interest, the steps and obligations are actually a lot harder, like a lot more strict in terms of not just avoiding conflicts of interest, but perceived conflicts of interest. And it goes to that sort of reasonable person test of, you know, what would you perceive to, to, you know, be a, I guess, a miss, a misuse of that position to favour, you know, other interests outside of your official role. I'll give you an example, because I think that's useful. If we look at the example of, you know, because I, I, this was flagged in the Auditor General's report and so I went and looked through and I, I, just, to be quite honest, I've spent the last couple of weeks just completely embedded in local health district minutes and different types of, of board meeting documents. But the one that, that really stuck out to me was the example of Kristin Stubbs. So Kristin Stubbs, who is now the head of P W C, or has just been made the acting Chair of P W C Australia, was appointed to the South Eastern Sydney Local Health District Board at the same time as she was working at P W C. This is back in, I think, two thousand and thirteen. During the time that she's a board member, the board then appoints P W C to do a significant body of work for them, which is then ongoing. Over a number of years, they set up a, you know, a project management office where there's, you know, this work for P W C or with P W C is being done. Mrs. Stubbs, sorry, Ms. Stubbs, she recuses herself at some points, but she's an apology at others. It's, it's unclear and, you know, I may call her in so we can ask her directly. But then she resigns from the board saying in the minutes, it says, because she wanted to do that work, that P W C had been awarded the contract for back in her, her other role as a, as a P W C. I'm not sure if she was a partner employee at the time, but the point is that she's, you know, we have this situation where you have somebody who has been appointed to a board, at the time actually, that the, the, the main person in New South Wales Health was Mary Foley, who herself had just come from P W C advising a minister. They've appointed a person to a board who is currently still working at P W C. They award, that, that same local health district then awards this work to P W C, which she then goes on to work on as her project, as her, like, full-time work. I'm not accusing Ms. Stubbs of anything. I, you know, that's, the ICAC's very clear. It's not about the character of a person or whether or not there's wrongdoing. It's about the perception and how that impacts on what the ordinary person might think. Do you look at that situation and think that's possibly not ideal in terms of the way that the Health has been structured in this state? That we are now allowing consultants to sort of advise and also come in as board members? And it's, does, does that smell to you?
So you're asking for an opinion, which is a difficult concept for a public servant to deal with. I, I did think of the other point I raised. When we, when we do the expression of interest process, part of that is about relevant mandatory checks into the background of people who we might be putting forward in a, in a long list to the Minister of the Day. So, so we have done some scrutiny such that we're able to, to understand someone's history to the extent that we can. And we ask them to make certain, you know, statements in, in the E L A response that they provide, that, you know, we rely upon as well, and we might do a bit of a spot audit check of some of those. So that's how, you know, we approach trying to provide the Minister with a long list, the Minister of the Day with a long list. When they.
Ganza. So within that process, you would have then an analysis of board composition, including backgrounds that you provide to the minister, so that the, the balance of the board could be looked at.
So that it meets the, what's specified in the Act as the necessary range of capabilities, yes.
Okay, and that includes background?
Yeah, so particularly if, if you were to lose particular members of a board who were there as having defined capability sets, then we would put forward names from the E L I list to the Minister's office that met that gap.
And are we able to get access, are we allowed to request that analysis over time? Obviously not private, not the, not the vetting process itself, but the list that you provide.
The list of names.
The names and their background.
Well, I, I will take it on notice. I'm not sure if there are any privacy rights associated to people who've completed the E L I. There may be.
But what you're saying is that, given that process, it would be inconceivable that the Minister would not be aware of a, at least potential conflict of interest, and then it's his or her call, correct?
It's the Minister's decision with the, the, the papers going through Cabinet.
But let's get back to the basics. Like, we have, I understand you're saying that's a decision for the minister. These are, you know, in this particular instance, this is two thousand and thirteen, fourteen. It's not a, something that is of a current concern for you. But in terms of Health's overall responsibility for ensuring that public money is being spent appropriately, do you not go back and look at the trends and look at the go, oh, you know, we've actually got, and when I, I crunch the numbers, like, pretty much everybody, if they're not on a, a big four consultant, these people on these boards are, have consultant, you know, current consulting firms of their own or they have, you know, whatever it happens to be. Do you go back and look at those trends and say, what are the current risks? The current risks from all of this to our spending of money on consultants?
So I, I think I want to go back to your, your first description of the example. And, and Alpha reminded me that we have a, a quite lengthy internal policy that's about management of conflict of interests, which specifically applies to board members. So as part of their induction, they would also be exposed to that policy framework, which is in addition to the compendium. So, but yes, we do expect that people, and I, I think the last point to make is that we, when we look at E O I responses, we are, we are often not including people in, in our list, long list to the minister, if they don't have any relevant board experience or board education. So, you know, we, we have an expectation that people who want to be on, on one of our boards may well have accreditation from, I've forgotten their name, A I C D.
So are you saying, are you saying that this expression of interest in these people? You're not saying that everybody who's appointed to these boards went through that process, though? Presumably a minister can step in and say.
The minister has, can on occasion make, you know, ask us to prepare the paperwork for, for a particular member, yes.
I mean, I'm just drawing links, but, you know, like most, there's so many ex-liberal MPs on these, on these boards as well. There are a couple of ex-labor, mainly actually, because I'm, you know, as a neither liberal nor labor person, I can say that, you know, pre the Liberals having any, any powering government, we had more labor people appointed to boards. That's true. There was a, it does seem to be political wrongdoing both sides. But there is, is still the point that we have a, a situation where a lot of, again, like, you know, I'm not casting aspersions or blame on, on, or saying that there's any wrongdoing. But in a situation where we have so many people on these boards who are seemingly connected with government or consulting agencies or both, do, does Health not have an obligation to step back and look at the risk of that in terms of ensuring that money is well spent? Are there no, you know, you talk about conflict of interest, oh, there's, there's conflict of interest policies, but at what point do you actually check they're being complied with?
Well, we, my understanding is that we, we did check in recent days with South East Sydney to understand what they tried to do at the time with respect to the potential for a conflict of interest. And the advice back from the district is that they took relevant measures and they feel that they managed that. Now, I can't comment any further on that. It's really a matter for the, the Chair of the Board.
So the Board, the Board Chairman, Michael Still, I'm just looking at, he was reported in The Australian saying that, quote, "Times had changed in terms of conflicts of interest." But in those days, the board needed help from whatever competent professional they could get. What does that mean? Times, times have changed in terms of conflicts of interest.
Have to ask Mr. Still.
I, yes, I will have to ask Mr. Still, but from the perspective of, of Health, do you not take any steps to ensure that the multiple boards within the health structure are being, you know, run and, and sort of complying with their governance requirements in the way that they should?
Well, that's what the framework around the compendium and the attestation is all about.
So it's about putting out documents to tell people what they should be doing, rather than actually checking that they're doing the thing?
Well, it's, you know, we have fifteen boards at least. We have two more for the specialty networks, and then we have other board governed entities in the pillars. You know, we, they are there to do a job. Their job is defined in the Act. They can't do things that are contrary to directions established by the Secretary. And we spend a lot of time, and indeed the Audit Office Inquiry in twenty nineteen was about how does that nuanced federation actually work and how does it operate? And, you know, we, we always believe that that can be improved.
Me is a bit bizarre in this particular case study, and going back to two thousand and thirteen, we can't, you know, you weren't around then, so there's no implication about your oversight. But when I was elected to council back in two thousand and eight, I remember getting training on this. And there were, there's a three-tier threshold test. One of them was perceived conflict of interest. Now, the idea that a recommendation would go to a minister where there's a clear perception of conflict, a clear perception of conflict, the idea that the recommendation wouldn't go to the minister and say, we recommend, we don't have this conflict. What I'm asking you is, are you confident that the current process would, would have done that? Would have applied that test and said to the minister, don't do this?
We, we don't recommend appointments to boards to the minister. We respond to the minister's directions and we give the minister a long list.
But you point out the conflicts.
Well, the conflict will be there in their, in their summary of their career.
Ah, so the minister's actually got to join the dots. It, it, it's not called out.
Clarify this issue of conflict, because it seems to be a bit circular, because if I'm understanding what's being suggested, if somebody, let's say, has worked at some stage in health at P W C, for example.
The day before they start at Health.
Yeah, and that then is the experience which is relevant for them being appointed, being considered to be eligible for appointment to the board. Any appointments made at that time, you need a crystal ball to know how, what decisions that local health district was going to make in relation to which consultants, if any, were going to be appointed. So it seems a bit internally circular to be suggesting there's this built-in conflict.
I think the Chair pointed out it was concurrent.
But, but if, for example, you have somebody who's P W C who's appointed, is there any conflict if a consultant from Deloitte's is engaged? No. So how, how do you know at the time of appointment what?
Question was very straightforward.
As a whole, will decide to do.
The question was very straightforward and simple. Is the perceived conflict, and I don't think anyone would seriously argue there's no perception in that situation of a conflict. Surely any reasonable person would perceive there could be, potentially be a conflict. Is it actually pointed out or is it, is it left to the minister to infer from reading through the C V's? And is that still the case?
I'd have to go back and check what advice was given to the Minister. And as I said, we don't, we're not recommending, we're responding to.
No, no, I understand.
But there would have, there would have been a brief to the Minister of the, at the time that would have dealt with that appointment and other appointments. And I'd have to check to see what, what was contained.
If you could also, sorry, just on that, if you could also take on notice, perhaps looking at, there are a number of them. So there are at least, you know, I think I found nine across just the Metropolitan Health Districts, where there had been a very clear connection with one of those big four consulting firms. If you could check what was said in relation to that, I'm very interested if there was particular flag for conflict of interest or any other issues raised in that advice.
And can I just get this on the record too, in terms of take it on notice if you like, but my specific question is, would the current processes require the department to specifically call out the perceived conflict of interest?
Or take it on notice?
Perhaps take it on notice. I'm wondering about Quantum, if you have any figures on what percentage of the local health district budget is spent on consultants?
Yeah, sure. I guess I just want to point out that, and not that this morning and just before, comments have been made in regards to whether we are disclosing or not disclosing the spend on consultants. I mean, it's the fact that you provided me with these, is that we disclose this information at the district level. So in answering your question, I would just say to verify the.
Yes, and that is correct. We're talking more about the, the way in which that is reported back up and how the Auditor General has oversight of it or not.
And I guess my point I want to make is that what you're looking for is a specific type of reporting that in a financial statement is not necessarily required unless someone specifically say, we want to see itemized information. Because from the disclosure point of view, this information is disclosed, is publicly available, as you noticed in your table. And therefore I just want to make sure that we're clear what we're talking about in comments that say we are not disclosing. We are disclosing the information. The information.
Very hard to find.
Well, I appreciate the challenge. But I also want to mention that the comments made this morning, that the limitations around the prime system, the treasury system, this information in our annual report reconciles to the prime system, so I don't see that a barrier. I appreciate the capital and the capital. So I don't see that a barrier, I appreciate the capital and the capitalizing.
Sorry, are you disagreeing with the Auditor General's?
Well, I think that, you know, there's certainly not a barrier, I mean, the numbers in our annual report match. What has been reported inside the treasury system.
For the record, that um particular spreadsheet that I handed you took one of my staff members over a day's work to. So to produce, that is not easily um findable and transparent information, uh but anyway, go ahead, Mister Father.
I was just gonna go back to this point in terms of, back to the question before about who makes the determination when it comes to. Uh procuring consultants, uh the local health board, depending on its identities or the like. But I imagine that the local health board would not have much interaction when it comes to actually determining consultant usage within the local health district, is that correct?
Yeah, they have no delegation.
No delegation whatsoever.
Delegation, therefore they have no say in what is being procured.
And and these things wouldn't go up to the local health board in terms of any sort of decision-making, so the perceived conflict of interest here is a bit of a moot point, isn't it? Not for you to comment.
Perhaps we can go to the ICAC report then, so in the, which one am I looking at? I'm looking at the April two thousand and nineteen. Managing Conflicts of Interest in the New South Wales Public Sector Report from ICAC. Um which steps us through very clearly what is a conflict of interest, why it matters if there's a perceived conflict of interest. Um it then goes into, you know, obviously disclosure is is a first step. Um but it then talks about how cor- how easily corrupt conduct can arise from a conflict of interest. Um including from misusing resources improperly accessing, using or disclosing information in connection with a conflict of interest, for example. Um if the the information that resides in in a consultant's head from sitting on a board. Perhaps makes its way back into the the general knowledge they're bringing to, you know, I don't know. Um put forward a proposal for for work from their firm to someone else in health, um what they say. Is that, and I'll quote, for high-risk units and branches. So that's where, you know, where we're assuming that there could be this this high risk, which you would have to say. Um that consultants sitting on local health districts, having such a huge consulting spend would be at this kind of. High-risk area for for conflicts, for high-risk units and branches, the best practice. Is to consider additional controls that go beyond the agency's standard policy requirements. Examples of additional controls include taking steps to restrict access to confidential information, implementing additional segregation of duties and supervision. What has New South Wales Health done to manage more effectively? The potential for conflicts of interest on local health district boards?
So I, it's the, um it's the strategies I've already described, I mean, the. We we train board members, we induct them, at that induction, they will be reminded about the. Conflict of interest policy, they'll be stepped through it, um you know, we we expect them to be directors. Um that are capable of playing a board role and. You know, part of that does rely upon their them as individuals, but it also relies very heavily on the Chair.
That that ICAC report also refers to, um you know, refusing to allow. People to also work in employment elsewhere, where it's likely to conflict with their duties as an official. Um especially when that official, in this case a board member, has financial delegations or influence over expenditure.
But I think you just told us they don't have financial delegations.
Is is that what, is that what we're absolutely saying that these, so you're saying that a that a board, an L H D board. That decides to hire P W C, for instance. Well, that's not what the minutes are implying, the minutes, the minutes, and I've got all of the um southeast and Sydney. Local Health District Board Minutes here, they talk about how the board has issued a tender, a request for tender to P W C. They talk about how the board has appointed P W C to do work for the district, are you saying that that's not, that's not what happens?
Well, it's it's a case that is before my time, I will need to take it on notice and.
Um I think we'll we'll come off of that bit of things then, and maybe just zoom back out to health generally. When, again, looking at that, that potential for conflicts of interest in terms of. Being exposed to information and then taking that information and using it elsewhere. Given the huge numbers of people within New South Wales Health who were previously. At a consulting firm or who then go directly on to a consulting firm, I could give you so many examples. Um of this, I mean, Mary Foley is a great one, but there is, I I could li- list off for you a dozen others of people who have just gone straight. From consulting to New South Wales Health, back out to consulting, what measures do you put in place? To ensure that they are not taking information with them um directly into their new positions from New South Wales Health?
Uh well, I I probably need to find for you the the end of employment separation. Process that that operates.
We talk a lot about procedures and rules and and the way things are supposed to be, um unfortunately, human beings don't act like that. They um are often incentivized to do a different thing, especially if they're not checked on or if it's not structurally. Um put in place for them, so if there's no requirement, for example, to be um on a gardening leave for a period of time or something like that. I understand as a matter of course, you would have things in in a separation agreement at the end of unemployment, everyone has that. But what are you doing, given the additional high risk here? To ensure that the information that they've gathered at New South Wales Health is not then taken. And used by them to be able to then um get business back from New South Wales Health afterwards, once they're back in their consulting firms.
Uh look, there are occasions where if someone leaves and goes to a consulting firm who who is working with us, and it can be more than the big four. Uh there will be a discussion with that firm about separation and and Chinese walls about where they can work.
So we're relying on the firm to do the right thing?
There there's a limit to what New South Wales Health can do in terms of um restricting the ability of someone to. Pursue gainful employment once they leave our employment.
So there's a simpler, a simpler example then, um I understand that many of these consulting projects involve. People from the consulting firms um coming and sitting within the department. Do you have any of those contract, uh consultants who actually sit in department?
Yeah.
Um what do you do while they are there on i- in a government space with access to government information? What are you doing to ensure they're not using that information or taking that information and then their employer using it? To then more favorably get work from you after?
First of all, if they come and sit with us, normally they're to be onboarded using our system. And therefore we issue a staff link number for us, which means they also need to comply with all the rules that we had to comply as employees. That means also to do the mandatory training, which I also admit sometimes is rather expensive, because we had to pay them while they do this training. Which also includes all type of training, including privacy and confidentiality confidentiality use of data. They had to be uh compliant with a um uh all our standards, including uh Code of Ethic. I think the most important part I want to also remind you is that when we know that that there is a potential risk. And in my experience, when I engage firms to do analysis on data, uh we also at times put closes. They had to destroy the data and provide evidence that the data's been destroyed.
Mm-hmm, are they given an I T login, they given access to, can they print out information while they're there? Again, I'm hearing that there's procedures in place and I would expect that, but what structural, given the high potential for conflicts of interest? What structural things are put in place to ensure, like that's an example that they have to prove that they've deleted data. Um for instance, but how much is it checked in terms of what else they have taken back? Particularly if you've got an employee going back to their partner in the consulting firm and saying, oh, look, here's some, you know, I need to share this with you to. Presumably, there's a lot of information flowing out of New South Wales Health at that point.
I think that the main reason why that the, anyone who has has access to a system, they had to do all the mandatory training. Is specifically to mitigate their risk, now, if you're asking what we do to eliminate the risk. I think we need to be, you know, uh realistic in regards to the the. Uh the the size of the the workforce we're bringing in and the risks associated for each individual engagement. And my experience is predominantly around the audit and assurance, where we at times bring in firms to assist us in. Assessing implementation of technical accounting standards and, you know, in that case, they had to go through the the whole process. And with that say, even the Audit Office, who comes and audits our results, they they had to do the through, they had to go through the same process as well.
Given the high risk, like the, I guess, you know, I would love, I would love to have such a um. A a favorable view of um people just doing what they have said that they would do and and, you know, going through training and then suddenly becoming ethical people. Um but fundamentally, we know that there is a an incentive structure put in place. Where there's an incentive for these consultants to learn as much as they possibly can. To then go back to their firms and then to get as much work as they possibly can from New South Wales Health, given that high-risk scenario. Do you not put any other additional limitations in place?
Make a standard though, we don't put any limitation, and I just want to reinforce, we do put limitation, the fact they got access to a printer doesn't mean they got access to. Database where we keep all the financial records, so that is restricted to what they need to see. Now, as I say, it's a very spaced approach, when we engage them with very sensitive data, where there is. Um you know, I'm talking about my second, my division, financial data that we know that could, you know, be used. We ask them to make sure that they destroy every data and every data that they use for their work.
Have you ever had uh an example of someone who hasn't done the right thing from a consulting firm? Who's not done the right thing, has there ever been a case of that?
Hmm not that I can recall, but I know the common does the same when we when they engage consultants to do some analysis on data. National data sets.
Has anyone ever um raised with you a concern about conflicts of interest of a consultant? Whether they are within New South Wales Health doing some sort of work or on a board?
Not personally.
With health, maybe take it on notice?
Okay.
Um have you, yeah, sorry, I'm just, I'm I'm trying to get to the bottom of. What the, if someone did have a concern um about a potential conflict of interest of somebody. Of a consultant working within any part of health, who would they go to, who does, who would keep that information, where's that point of?
So it would either be um something that comes to the ministry, uh you know, by email typically. Sometimes it will go directly to the district and depending on the nature of the matter and whether or not. There's there's not a conflict in the district investigating the issues themselves, they will pursue it through their um local internal audit function. But if they feel there's a conflict, if it, for example, alleges a uh an involvement of the Chief Executive as well. Then typically, the audit function in the district would refer it to the ministry and we would. Seek to understand the the facts of the matter and and understand if risk is is actually manifesting.
Are you able to take on notice um to find out whether that has occurred? At any time in relation to a local health district board?
Where it's a conflict potentially about being.
Where there's a potential conflict of interest, so it doesn't have to be consultant of any kind, I'm curious as to.
We won't be able to do that in, by the twenty-third of, because we will have to go out and ask every district to.
Not at a district level, at a health level, where it's come into.
The ones that have come to us, yeah, we can probably do that in ten days.
I think sometimes the the evidence of robustness of of systems working is whether or not there have been complaints, whether they were valid or not. Um to then work out whether checks and balances are ever operational, um it's intriguing that we're not seeing. That, yeah, there seems to be quite a a a level of of lack of oversight um with these boards. Um and with the districts, but is there, are there other people within New South Wales Health that we should be calling to ask these questions?
Uh well, if you want to understand board practice, I think you need to think about talking to some of the board chairs.
We will talk to the board chairs, anyone else within New South Wales Health in terms of. You know, who who makes the decisions about putting in extra requirements for um. You know, making sure that conflicts of interest don't become a problem or, you know, that sort of thing, who is the person, where does the buck stop? In terms of ensuring that those consultants being managed, that's you, all right. Just checking we had the right people, does anyone else have any questions? Yes.
This needs analysis that is required to be performed before consultancy firms engage, is that? But that, just to clarify, that's both for the ministry and the L H Ds? Yep, so can I ask what sort of information is called for as part of that needs analysis?
So I can provide there on notice if you want with the details, otherwise I can make reference to the procedure that we have issued so that it kind of guides all the information that. We asked the team to consider in regards to their needs analysis, identify the business needs, requires them to assessing whether the spin. The spend is required, identify and understand your internal stakeholders' needs, engage in those stakeholders to win their commitment. Uh to your procurement strategy, because they'll require them to also be part of that potential evaluation panel. And brainstorming different ideas on what your agency requires uh from the procurement and exploring alternatives. And for the delivery of the same outcome, and determining and agreeing on the business needs. That's broadly what we asked the team to consider as part of the first step on getting started.
So for example, with that exploring alternatives, is that just a requirement that they tell you that they've explored alternatives? Or do they actually have to quantify, well, we we thought about doing this internally, but. We don't have the capacity and here's the evidence as to why we don't have the capacity, is it that thorough or is it more, yes, we've we've done what you've said?
No, I think that's, it depends on the scope, I guess, you know, it could be a big project and ultimately any big project will run with a steering committee, which is formed. In includes the different team members, and I presume at that time, once the steering committee has decided, yes, we need to go to ten, to six, some. Support from a consultancy in regards to advisory or other, they will come, you know, with a proposal, a brief and ultimately.
And do those steering committees have workers, workers and workers representatives on them?
In respect of internal workers you're referring to or, yes, yes, that's right, yeah.
Sure, sorry, I've got one final question.
Yep, go ahead.
Um mine's just a an accounting thing, and you might be able to answer it super quickly, but it's for someone who's who's, you know, perhaps not as well versed. In going through the financial statements of the local health districts. Um there seems to be a change that occurred between twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen and twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen.
Oh, yeah.
I'm not anticipating that you you you're, but it might still be an easy answer for you to come back with me. In the, in the twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, consultancies were reported, and this is across, I've checked across them all. Um consultancies, the the spend was reported in two line items, um capital works and other.
Oh, yeah.
And then it it wasn't, so it started to be consolidated into just the one, and I just wondered. I I looked at if there was a change in accounting standards, I couldn't see anything there, and I just wondered what it would be. That had prompted the change across all the area health districts.
Look, I I'll go back in regards to what prompted, uh but I suppose this connects back to the comment the Auditor General made this morning. Regards to the the difficulties at time to interpret the whole spend on consultants, because some is capitalized versus.
I just wonder why at that year, because it's a devolved system, so we kept being told it's a devolved system, so each area health service of that year. Changed the way they accounted from one, two to one.
It's a good point, but I need to remind you that, yes, it's devolved, because locally they need to make this assessment, whether they do need to spend the resources in certain areas. But ultimately, there is a overall government framework which we cascading down, and that's what we attempt to do with that policy, which refers to the procurement.
So would you mind seeing if there was some change in policy that prompted that, it was just an intriguing kind of change that was across the board, so it'd be good to know why.
If I could just, one final question in relation to the, for you to take on notice, um I would think. Um I have in front of me a New South Wales, sorry, a P W C report from June two thousand and twelve. Um that was prepared for New South Wales Infrastructure called Health Infrastructure Baseline Report. Um it's a good sixty-something pages, I understand that it was only, it cost nine thousand dollars for um. New South Wales Infrastructure at the time, I did ask questions um of the Auditor General earlier about this practice of of loss leading. Um just so that we can check whether or not this was also loss leading, um can you just perhaps let us know? What future spend in the years after this, um New South Wales Infrastructure spent on consulting services with P W C?
No, sorry, just to clarify, New South Wales Infrastructure or he- Health Infrastructure?
Uh it was for New South Wales, oh, that's true, it was for infrastructure in New South Wales in relation to health infrastructure, yeah, yeah.
Then I need to determine who is engaged.
No, good point, yeah, okay, might have to ask infrastructure instead.
And can I go back to your original request in regards to ambulance and whether there were other participants in the uh suite? There were six providers.
Mm-hmm.
Who responded to the request and and the outcome is recorded in the E tender, so if you want, I can provide you with the names or the companies there.
That would be good, yeah. Yeah, thank you. Um, excellent. Well, thank you. We are a little over time. Thank you very much for your generosity in um spending time with us to answer our multitude of questions. Um, to the extent there were questions on notice, of which there were many, um or we have supplementary questions, uh they, as I said at the beginning, are due back by the twenty third. Uh we'll take a quick uh afternoon tea break and we'll be back at three fifteen um with New South Wales Procurement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, welcome back. Thank you, all of you, for coming back. So I'll now welcome our next witnesses from New South Wales Procurement. And if I could get each of you to please state your name, position, title, and then swear either the oath or the affirmation.
Terrific, thank you. My name is Sonia Campbell. I'm the Deputy Secretary Commercial in New South Wales Treasury. And I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you.
I'm professionally known as Song Hong, but my legal name is Song Su Hong. And I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you very much. If you would like to start by making a statement to start us off, thank you.
Of course, thank you. So thank you all very much for the opportunity to participate as a witness in this hearing today. As I said, my name is Sonia Campbell. I'm the Deputy Secretary Commercial in New South Wales Treasury. And I'm joined by my colleague Song Hong, who is the Executive Director for New South Wales Procurement. We're looking forward to supporting the committee in relation to the inquiry into New South Wales Government's use of consultants. And we have provided the committee with an interim submission with a view to updating it following our hearing with you today. That interim submission contains information in relation to the New South Wales Government's procurement operating framework, including roles and responsibilities of the Minister for Finance, the Procurement Board, devolved agencies and New South Wales Procurement, and how this impacts on each devolved agency's engagement and use of consultants. As you're all aware, New South Wales Government is one of the largest and most complex organisations in the southern hemisphere, employing more than 400,000 staff across a diverse set of industries. New South Wales Government Procurement Operating Framework provides all devolved agencies with government-wide laws, policies, and guidelines as to how they should procure goods and services of any kind for the state of New South Wales, with ultimate accountability for those procurements being with the heads of agencies and departments. Specifically, in relation to the use of professional services firms, which include consultancy services. In our interim submission, we have focused on the Whole of Government Performance and Management Services Scheme that is managed by New South Wales Procurement, which is the largest of such schemes in government. We'd be happy to provide you with more details on this scheme as part of this inquiry. In addition, New South Wales Procurement is actioning the recommendations from the Auditor General's report on New South Wales Government use of consultants, noting there are key dependencies on departments and agencies to fully implement those recommendations. As mentioned earlier, New South Wales Government is complex and spans a diverse set of industries. As a result, there will always be a need for external strategic advice to assist and support government in making decisions. And this was evident during the rapid social and economic responses to the COVID-19 epidemic and natural disasters over the past few years. We understand the people of New South Wales are searching for confidence that the strategic advisory work undertaken by consultants for government is underpinned by policies, procedures, processes, and ultimately assurance that this work does deliver value and does not result in conflicts of interest or unethical behaviour. Thank you again for the opportunity to provide the committee with information about the broader current operating framework for procurement, and more specifically on the use of consultants. And we're looking forward to your questions.
Thank you very much. I'll ask one to get us started, and then I'll hand over to the government members, I think, who are desperate to ask questions. So in the Auditor General's 2023 report, we heard earlier that only three of the 82 consulting engagement examples that they reviewed had evidence of a post-engagement review. My understanding is that it's a requirement under the Performance and Management Services Scheme administered by Procurement New South Wales for them to do that review. What enforcement measures do you take in relation to the procurement rules?
Yeah, thank you for your question, Ms Boyd. I'll start perhaps at a high level with a bit of context around the Procurement Board, and then I might refer to my colleague, Mr Hong, around the operation of the scheme itself. So the Procurement Board oversees the quality of procurement in government through the accreditation scheme. There is an accreditation scheme for both goods and services, which is administered by New South Wales Procurement. And there is a separate one for construction procurement administered by Public Works, both of which are overseen by the Procurement Board. The Procurement Board, that scheme relies on self-attestations from all agencies that are required to be submitted annually and signed off by both the Chief Procurement Officer within the agency and the head of the department, the secretary. And that scheme requires a whole range of factors to be reviewed. One thing that the board is looking at at the moment is how to add additional assurance to that process. And those are very much live conversations in the context of the Procurement Board currently. And we do believe there is opportunity for improvement. I might hand over to my colleague, Mr Hong, now to talk about the particular performance management scheme.
Thanks, Ms Campbell. Like I said, that sets the context of how the scheme and the board works. In terms of your specific question about enforcement, I'll just rely on the comments from Ms Campbell. There isn't accreditation scheme. The agency head is ultimately accountable for that agency. And we would need to get reporting from the agencies to determine what additional reviews that we need to do. And so in that particular instance, yes, the Auditor General's report highlighted that. We weren't aware of that, and so...
Were you surprised?
We were surprised because the scheme, again, given the complexity of New South Wales Government, we have to operate within a devolved structure. And we have to rely on that devolution structure and the authorisation set by it. And so the expectation would be that the agencies, one, comply, and two, ultimately, the agency head is responsible for what happens within that agency. And if it requires escalation, it needs to be escalated to New South Wales Procurement or the New South Wales Procurement Board.
Given the Auditor General's report and those findings, and the fact that it did come as a surprise, do you think that the self-attestation scheme is working? Should there be a more proactive monitoring and enforcement from New South Wales Procurement?
You happy to meet us, or you want to go first?
I'm happy for you to make a comment first, and I'm happy to add to it.
So maybe I'll take it up a level. New South Wales Procurement, in terms of its, I guess, authorisations and responsibilities, we don't have any from a legislation perspective. The legislation sets out the powers to the board and has responsibilities for agencies to comply. We do support the board, and we do support agencies in fulfilling their obligations. In relation to your question specifically around the accreditation scheme, I've been in government for two years, and it is one of the things I've looked at. And Ms Campbell's already highlighted that we are looking at further assurances that we could get from agencies, either from them or from us going in. But again, we can't do everything. And so one of the things that we are looking at is further assurances going into agencies. But that's in active discussion with the board, as well as the agencies involved.
Trading enough then, but can you just clarify, does that mean Treasury has no legislative purchase over the Procurement Board?
The Procurement Board is set up under statute. So I am a member of the Procurement Board delegated by the Treasury Secretary. And there are duties under that legislation for us as board members. And I've been in that role since the end of last year. So I've had three meetings with my Procurement Board members where I have worked to steer the conversation to be strategic, and particularly around our collective responsibilities from a whole-of-government perspective with respect to that legislation.
And does the board, under the current legislative framework, does the board have the ability to request better quality data to improve? It does?
Yes, it does. The board has the ability to give Procurement Board directions, which would have the force of law.
Okay, thanks.
Can I just ask you? Perhaps I'll go, I was going to sort of do this after. I might just come forward with this question. Just the, you have to have been living under a rock not to have seen the federal inquiries into consultants, and particularly the scandals surrounding PWC at the moment. What steps has Procurement taken in relation or in response to those revelations in relation to PWC?
Yes, I'm happy for Mr Hong to answer this.
Given this committee was probably preparing for this committee, there's been some press this morning about this particular matter, which I'm happy to share, and decisions were made over the past week. So the things that were highlighted in the press and the press release sets out that we met with PWC senior leadership on the 1st of June. Or I met with a colleague, PWC senior leadership, to discuss the Collins matter that's under investigation. We were given context as well as information as to what had happened. In terms of specific actions, there were three actions that we have taken. The first one is for every ongoing PWC matter that New South Wales Government engages, they will clear any staff before they are engaged so that those staff have not been implicated or are involved in the Commonwealth matter. The second...
Sorry, that's for ongoing contracts, did you say?
For new engagements.
And they've already confirmed that existing work.
For new?
Yep, they've already confirmed that in writing. For new ones, they will attest to the procuring agency at the time of procuring, but also to New South Wales Procurement once a month, which is the reporting required that we have as part of the scheme that we operate, that they'll report to us on that particular point. The second point was in relation to reviewing the conflict of interest and confidentiality provisions of the Performance and Management Services Scheme. And we will make any adjustments as required once we review it. As per the interim submission, we have confidentiality and conflict of interest terms within that scheme. And so all suppliers must adhere to that. But we will have a look at it and determine whether any adjustments need to be made. The third and probably the most impactful response was that after considering what's going on within the Commonwealth, we have decided to, sorry, I had recommended, and the Treasury Secretary has approved that PWC for taxation services, which is category seven within the scheme, they will be suspended for three months pending further review and subject to further information being provided through the various inquiries and investigations that are ongoing at the moment.
So that looks, sorry, can I say?
I was just going to add that that has also then been communicated to all of the chief procurement officers across government, all of the Procurement Board members and chiefs of staff of secretaries.
So, okay, so we have, so you met with PWC on the 1st. There were assurances in relation to no one who was involved directly in the PWC tax leak, part of the scandal being involved in the works currently being done for New South Wales Government. Then there was, like I say, an agreement to do a confidentiality review in contracts. I think it's a very good example of what I was talking about before. You put all of the provisions in place that you like. You can't actually stop people from doing the wrong thing without sort of more structural measures. And then thirdly, that just the tax services would be suspended for three months, or no new tax services for three months. What is the value of the contracts that you, in the ordinary course, would have expected to make with PWC in the next three months? In tax, in that particular category?
I guess the way I'll answer that is that in the devolved model agencies, hire consultants via the procurement process. So I don't actually have the information. I wouldn't have the information. That's a question for all the agencies to determine how much work they would do with PWC on any, I guess, given month.
From a rudimentary understanding of the type of work that has been given out to consultants so far, it seems like a very, very small percentage of the total consulting spend of New South Wales Government to PWC would be in relation, in the ordinary course, would be in relation to tax work, would it not?
Well, I guess I'll answer that by saying two things. One, the Commonwealth matter relates to international, the international tax team and the tax work that they did for the Commonwealth. And so we deemed it, well, the recommendation that I made was deemed appropriate, given the fact that it is the tax culture, the culture at the time of that breach. That was the issue. And so given that investigation is going on at the moment within the Commonwealth and across different forums, they seemed a proportionate response to that. In relation to any expenditure on tax, I can take that notice if you like and see what the numbers are in SpendCube, which is the system that my team oversee for the whole of government.
Is that a proportionate response, though? If you've got, if you've got a firm that has been found to have fundamentally breached the trust of the Australian people, that has made decisions and done, breached ethics in order to accrue a gain for itself while also doing taxpayers out of hundreds of millions of dollars at least, is that a proportionate response to say, that's okay, that was just a few bad apples. We'll just, anything related to that specific bit of what you were doing, we won't do with you for three months? That does, to me, that does not sound like a proportionate response to what's gone on.
I would answer that by saying, at this point in time, until we have further information, we do believe that's a proportionate response. You know, these big consulting firms provide a diverse range of services to government agencies. And by, I guess, singling out a particular one when all of them would probably have historical issues in the past, you know, is thereby reducing the market that we would have for what might be services that are needed. So we think it's a proportionate response. There are, you know, independent reviews happening at the Commonwealth level within the organisation itself. And pending the outcome of those reviews, we will continue to review our recommendations around PWC being a pre-qualified consultant in New South Wales.
Ms Campbell, did you previously work at PWC?
I did, Ms Boyd, yes.
Do you think that that experience, perhaps, do you think there's any conflict of interest or perceived conflict of interest in you being involved in making decisions in relation to the procurement of PWC, having worked with PWC in the past?
In this instance, Mr Hong made the recommendations to the secretary, which were approved. So I don't believe there's a conflict of interest. I think my experience working for PWC is reflective of many people across the public sector who have worked for consultancy services...
There are so many.
Who now work for government. And there's a reason why we work for government. But I think if there was any perceived conflict of interest, then I would remove myself from that decision-making.
Thank you. I'll hand over to the government to ask questions.
Mr Hong, you mentioned, I think in response to a question from the Chair, that with the devolved structure, that getting information wasn't necessarily as easy as it might appear from the outside. I wondered if you could talk a bit more about that, because we heard from the Auditor General this morning about challenges with data and sort of integrity and how comprehensive it is. But also perhaps if you could address, because that was part of the recommendations in her report. So perhaps if you could also address where Treasury, particularly New South Wales Procurement, is with those recommendations. So the data issue in context of those other recommendations as well.
Yeah, that's fine. I'll answer those questions to you.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
In relation to data, so we do have a data, we have actually multiple data sets within New South Wales Procurement. So maybe I'll talk at that and then pivot to the data set that we may need in the future. The data set that we have, the main data set is the system called SpendCube. It's effectively the invoice data from all the agencies across government. So it is backward-looking. And so it gives a view as to how public monies are spent. And so, and it is done at a supplier level. So although we do try to categorise it, it's ultimately at a supplier level. So we know supplier names, we know ABNs, and it tells us, it gives us a view of how money is spent across the sector. We do have another data set, which we, in relation to professional services. So as I mentioned, we have the scheme called Performance and Management Services Scheme. Within that, there is a subset of 12 categories called Business Advisory Services. And as part of suppliers signing up for those 12 categories, they are required to submit data, the ones that have signed up to the standard commercial framework. And so they can provide us with supplier-fed data about the engagements across the sector. So they are two data sets. And I use those, well, my team uses those data sets for triangulation purposes because government is complex. And I know the Auditor General would love one single data source. I think triangulation is a way that you can have a view as to what's going on between the operational data that I oversee versus the financial reporting data that my colleagues in Treasury oversee. In relation to the Auditor General's specific recommendations, as Ms Campbell mentioned, we are in discussions with the Procurement Board as to what additional information that would require from agencies to allow us to have, I guess, a macro oversight. And the way I look at it is, and I've been saying it to my teams, which is it's a wide but targeted data set. Because we can't go wide and deep, because that would be, one, from a bureaucratic perspective, too burdensome. And two, you've got to be able to do something with the data. So how do you get a wide data set that is targeted? And so there's a discussion that we are actively involved in with the Procurement Board to determine what that would look like.
Can I just ask on that, where you said that there was a, I think, I don't think you used the words, but it's like a micro pickup of all the invoices. Is it not then theoretically possible, if those invoices are marked consultancy work previously, presumably there's an itemised or a heading consultancy work, PWC, whatever, it's not theoretically possible to use all that micro-analysis to work out exactly?
As I mentioned, again, it all comes down to the detail, of course. And so if the request is, do you have, on the data set that we've been able to get from agencies, expenditure for one or all of the big four, we have the information. If it's consultancy, as, have we talked about the definition of consultancy? But as defined in the Procurement Board direction, as well as the GFS, the Government Sector Finance Guidance, that's a narrower definition. So we have the broader definition, which is professional services, which is what my team oversees. But the definition of consultancy, that I would have to point to these total state sector accounts.
So what do you do in relation, just that contract versus consulting definition? What does procurement do to make sure that people are reporting that correctly, other than giving them the definition? But in terms of doing, I don't know, a spot check to make sure that they got that right? Or, you know, we got the information from the Auditor General that there was, you know, potentially a bit of grey, at least grey area, if not sometimes just deliberate, deliberate or maybe not deliberate mistakes being made in that classification?
Happy to address.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So there is a definition of consultancy. And there are some examples and guidance that my team has given. I guess the Auditor General's recommendation is we enhance those guidelines and guidance. If you look at the definition of consultancy, it talks about sort of temporary engagements, advice for the purposes of management, in this case, government management making decisions. And so there may be some enhancements to that. But I think where it may add value is to actually define what is not a consultancy. And that is what my team is looking at. Because if I look at the overarching services provided by professional services, which is the area that my team focuses on, the two subsets will be consultancy advice and non-consulency advice. And then to then give guidance to the sector as to what is non-consulency advice. And to the Auditor General's point, that there may be some grey, I agree, there will be some grey. And agents will need to determine whether it's strategic advice for decision-making, or whether it's not that, and therefore in the other bucket.
So in terms of, so not just that, but I guess, you know, the, oh, sorry, the conversation we're having before about, you know, getting these contracts in just below thresholds to, you know, what seems like an avoidance then of higher requirements. What does procurement do in terms of actively looking for that and going, oh, hang on a minute? There's a lot of those that are just below the threshold, or there's a lot of these that look like they probably have been put in as a contractor rather than consultant. What do you proactively do to ensure that these things are being entered properly and that the system's not being dodged?
I'm happy to answer that. I think there's a number of things that New South Wales Procurement do around that. The first is obviously providing the framework and the rules and working through the governance that sits under the Procurement Board, through the Procurement Leadership Group, yep. But that's also a practical element, you know, where there are practitioners coming together, because it's really the responsibility of the chief procurement officers in those agencies to be making sure that the frameworks are followed within those agencies. Follow-up question, while you...
Yeah, of course.
Apologise for cutting off mid-sentence. But I think one of the things we've heard a lot about is the frameworks, the policies. There's quite a lot, as I see it, in sort of the pre-qualification, self-assessment, self-attestation area that my colleagues have already referred to. I'm at a loss as to understand ultimately what happens. Ultimately, if an organisation or an agency is found not to have engaged, who ultimately says, that is not okay, you can't do this? We've seen it now once with PWC after, you know, everything that's come out. Ultimately, is it a question of, oh, well, as long as you follow the framework, that's okay? And if it's not, can you give an example of a sanction, apart from PWC? Aside from PWC, what are the sanctions that have been implied? So where I was going to follow on was give you an example of what we do in Treasury. So whilst New South Wales Procurement is part of Treasury and is whole-of-sector facing, we obviously have a procurement function within Treasury as well. And we have a whole programme, and Song will step in if I misstate anything, where we've developed the toolkits, the templates, the training, the regular training as part of inductions. A lot of these were part of the Sedgwick, Independent Sedgwick Report, which is another example of what we did in Treasury following, you know, adverse findings around our procurement practices. And all of those recommendations have been accepted, are being implemented. They track through our Audit and Risk Committee, all the way up to our Executive Board.
Is part of that that you don't take an attestation or a statement from the recipient agency on face value, but you actually scrutinise it?
As Mr Hong said before, we're looking at that process at the moment. And we've been piloting assurance, new ways of looking at assurance with some agencies at the moment. But I do agree that that is an area for review and opportunity from our perspective.
Can I add maybe one more thing? And as part of the accreditation model and accountability sitting with the head of the agency, you need checks and balances within that agency. So if you think about how consultants are engaged, it's not done by the procurement team. There is a business owner with a budget that's trying to either fulfil a service or to complete an initiative that has been set either by the secretary, the deputy secretary, or maybe even the minister. They will drive that process, and the procurement teams within the agencies will then support that business owner in terms of how to procure. The expectation is that the procurement teams understand the framework, understand the policies and the guidelines. And they should be calling things out within their own delegations to the relevant senior people if they see things that are not fit for purpose or unethical, et cetera. If it can't be resolved within that framework, then they can come back up to the Procurement Board and to the New South Wales Procurement. Because again, it is a very... If it can't be resolved within that framework, then they can come back up to the procurement board and to the New South Wales procurement because, again, it is a very diverse.
Hmm.
Industry set across government. We can't oversee everything. The framework is there.
How often, how often do they bring, the the procurement teams bring that to the to the procurement board? And is it the procurement team's responsibility? I understand in the framework there are some inbuilt suggested points of evaluation. Is it the procurement team's job to evaluate and also just in terms of Treasury, the the Treasury engagements? I mean, some Treasury engagements of consultants have been huge, you know, not even historically, quite recently, in the millions of dollars.
Yes.
So I wondered if we could have that answer to the evaluation and then an answer to what has Treasury done to evaluate the success? Or otherwise of, um, its engagements with consultants. So there's two questions there. The procurement board, have they seen those, uh, how often do they see that reporting from? And then the treasury.
In in my time in government tours, uh, nothing has come up from a, from a consultancy perspective to the board.
Can I, can I ask, and I think, um, Doctor Kane's maybe sharing the same frustrations here that. If, and I'm gonna use a silly example to explain what I mean, so bear with me, but, um, we can write laws that say you don't break into people's houses. And then we can explain that law to people and say you don't break into the houses and and then if we see them doing it, maybe we say, well. Um, here's a bit more guidance as to how you don't break into people's houses, but eventually, if nobody's actually putting a sanction on the people that are breaking into houses. Nothing's gonna change. I feel like you you keep, you and, um, also New South Wales Health are talking a lot about. We're putting these rules in place, we put these frameworks, we make people sign a thing to say that they've done the training or they've read the whatever. That's not the same as enforcement of the rules and guidelines and processes. Where in the government structure does somebody enforce those guidelines? And actually check to see that they're being complied with.
Yeah, I think that is the role of the procurement board and the responsibility of the procurement board. Um, and I think there is definitely opportunity to review and improve the way that the board is doing that.
So they're not doing it, is what I'm hearing?
No, it's not that they're not doing it, but I think to your point, um, we are relying on the self-attestation. Or have relied on the self-attestation process and.
Is there an example then of them doing that enforcement role in a way that is not just writing more rules and putting out more more procedures and guidelines?
Well, I think, um, the the better question is, you know, that what we're focusing on in the procurement board at the moment is the capability. That is needed to be strategic, to do all of the things that.
The question though was, what have they done in terms of enforcing to check that the guidelines have been met? I said, they're probably not doing anything then, and you said, no, no, they're definitely, they're doing something. Please give an example of what it is that the procurement board does to monitor and enforce compliance with the rules.
If if the secretaries of departments who are accredited to carry out procurement of goods and services. Are signing off to the procurement board that their agency has followed those processes, then the current. Um, operating environment would be for the board to trust those attestations.
Okay.
And then we're looking then as a board and how do we add a layer of assurance for the board?
What does that say to you if we heard from the Auditor General that three out of eighty-two. Um, consulting engagements had gone through that mandatory post-review, uh, post, you know, post-engagement performance review, only three. But you're still getting these attestations that are, yeah, we're complying with the procurement guidelines, it's all fine. Clearly something is fundamentally broken with the self-attestation. To then just say, we're looking to put a level of extra assurance on top is really understating what is required here.
I I think, Miss Boyd, that, um, firstly, we haven't seen the specific agency audit reports. As Treasury, um, that were done separately. We've received the one that was provided to Treasury. So, again, uh, don't have full visibility on that. Um. Remember that there are procurement board members from every agency in that board who have the same responsibility from a whole of government. Procurement perspective to be, uh, bringing issues to the board. Uh, so that as a board, we can look at what measures need to be put in place.
If if the board is.
To monitor and enforce.
If the board is comprised of agency secretaries or the delegates.
Yes.
And the board is relying on attestations from these secretaries, are you not just marking your own homework?
Uh, look, it's a, it's a very good question. I mean, essentially, um, the secretaries have all delegated. So I would expect that between the chief procurement officer and the delegate of the secretary who is the board member. That the secretary is taking ultimate responsibility for providing those attestations to the procurement board.
I I certainly have no assurance at all at this point that New South Wales procurement, who is supposed to be. I thought, and correct me if I'm wrong, supposed to be the the setter of standards for procurement. Particularly in in the context of the inquiry we're looking at right now, for this massive amount of spending on consultants. We've seen the past government couldn't rein in, that was going up and up and up and up. We've seen, you know, reports coming out from the Auditor General for years. Talking about lack of transparency over that spend and all the rest of it. Um, the Auditor General, uh, New South Wales Health. Saying to us, it's procurement, New South Wales, who can tell you the total, um, the total spend on consultants, et cetera, et cetera. It sounds like the buck stops there. I'm really worried that we have a procurement board that is effectively. As I say, marking its own homework and relying on itself, do that, does that not scream to you the massive risk? That we are really, that we don't actually know what's going on in terms of procurement when it comes to management consulting?
Um, as I said, I think there is a lot of opportunity for review and improvement. I do think that in addition, New South Wales procurement. Have put in place a number of measures over the last four years in response to the previous Audit Office report around those recommendations. For greater transparency and data. The challenge that central agencies have. Is needing those other agencies to be implementing and investing in those systems and capability. To be, you know, putting those checks and balances and monitoring and compliance in place within their agencies.
Add to this because, perhaps in a bit more diplomatic way, um, the, so in terms of, I'm not suggesting yours was. Sorry. We're in government now, um. Structurally, I guess structurally, you've got this situation which the chair's pointed out where you've got the. People who are procuring on the board kind of talking to themselves about, is everyone okay with this? Yep, let's go back. Yeah, so that's putting it very crudely, but.
Just add one point of clarification though, there is a diverse membership across the board, ranging from CFOs to CFOs. But they are all at that deputy secretary level.
Yeah.
So so it's not everyone marking their own homework.
Okay, so you've got this, lo- what, the way I'm sort of seeing this is, is that the agency will get a budget. From the Treasury.
Mm-hmm.
And as long, that's their K P A, right? I I'm gonna stick within this budget and as long as I do that. The qualitative nature of the spend is kind of neither here nor there. If I spend, you know, a third of it on consultants. No one's really too fast as long as I tick all the boxes right now. That's, I know that's a crude characterisation, but let's pull it back a little bit. Has Treasury ever done anything in terms of providing a template approach or a tool? For assisting the agencies to do a cost benefit analysis, for example, on the use of consultants vis-à-vis internal resource? So that there's a, like, a more proactive approach to go, here's a way we can measure whether or not it's actually worthwhile us doing it.
Hmm.
And once we've gone down that path, then, you know, we're good to go.
Um, I thi- I think it's an excellent question, um, because we do that for other investments. Um, probably one point of clarification at the start and I, um, is that within New South Wales government, we have labour expense caps. As well as operating expenditure, so we can't just decide, you know, what we wanna spend on each. Um, and that does put a constraint on the public sector, so I think it's important to acknowledge that.
Yes.
Um, and then what I would say is that whilst the procurement policy framework sets out the framework for planning, sourcing, managing. And has a range of mandatory requirements and tools and templates, um. It is then, you know, able for agencies that are accredited to operationalise that. And and Mister Hong might wanna add any more clarity to that? No?
Um, good.
Can I, yeah, can I jump in there?
Yes, of course.
It sounds to me a little bit then, following on from from the questions and the discussion we've had here today, sounds to me a bit that. That the crux of the issue is the devolved structure, that that doesn't allow oversight by the procurement board, which is meant to have oversight. It doesn't allow New South Wales procurement to get the data it needs. It doesn't allow us the transparency we would like to be able to identify. Spend, um, would that, i- is that a reasonable assessment?
Uh, I think there is certainly an opportunity at the moment to look at how the devolved model works versus, you know, what sits in the centre. And where on that spectrum, you know, is a good operating model that allows greater transparency and greater insight into data.
Is that opportunity being undertaken at the moment?
Uh, from our perspective, I would say yes.
Can you, um.
Both through.
Alused on that a little bit?
Well, uh, I mean, both through conversations at the procurement board and and noting I've only been in the chair since, uh, December last year. Um, but also through engagement with the Minister for Finance, who has responsibility under the legislation. So we are proactively, um, briefing at the moment around how that model works and where there are opportunities for improvement.
Can I go back to my evaluation question? Cause we got, we got legitimately carried away with something else. Um, but I was asking you, Miss Campbell, about the valuation that had been undertaken by Treasury of your own.
Yes.
Consulting, considerable consulting spend.
Yes.
I wonder if you don't know, but I'd be happy if you took it, um, on notice, if you could provide a a bit of the same assessment that the Audit General did. Is it how many, uh, consulting, um, uh, contracts have have you engaged in over, let's say, five years? Um, how many of those have had evaluation, um, and, you know, negative, positive, those kinds of results? Um, have you got any sort of answers?
Treasury is also a a big place, so I can speak to what I'm aware of within, you know, my portfolio and my department. And and a lot of that expenditure does come from the commercial space. There has historically been large transactions, large reviews with a large amount of expenditure. Um, I I think there is, uh, a supplier sort of feedback as part of the system.
Yep.
Um, a lot of that will depend on the individual, um, teams that engage that. A lot of the time, in my experience, it's been. You know, verbal feedback, um, but I agree, there's probably an opportunity, uh, for things to be more formally recorded.
I understood that there was a formal requirement under the procurement framework for any, uh, contract over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to have, so this verbal thing that goes on. That doesn't fulfil their, so we were talking about compliance and non-compliance and and the board signing off that they'd done, you know, every member of the board are testing that they'd done it. Well, clearly, as the chair pointed out, they haven't, so.
I I think it happens in a range of different ways, I guess, is the point that I was trying to make and and in my experience, a lot of this has also been through. Um, governance bodies, um, you know, recording that feedback at the end of an engagement. So I think there would be different sorts of examples of how that is actually done in practice. Happy to take the question on notice and and come back to you with some, uh, analysis from a Treasury perspective.
Appreciate that, thank you.
I've just got a quick one from the earlier evidence, just out of interest, um, the state-owned corporation.
Yes.
Use of, that's not reportable. Was the, what was the, um, genesis or the rationale for that?
Uh, obviously I wasn't in the previous conversation, but you're talking about not reportable of consultancy expenditure. I mean, they're a commercial business that report to an independent board. Um, so, uh, you know, that sort of is reported in a different way, um, from a government, general government perspective.
Is that, is basically, is that because that the the Tre- Treasury's shareholder? Like, for example, Essential Energy, hundred percent shareholder.
Yes.
And they return a dividend and therefore as long as the dividend's okay, Treasury doesn't really delve into the micros of how they run their businesses, that.
Oh, no, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that.
Okay.
Um, you know, we have a business planning process annually, um, there is a statement of business intent. There is a statement of expectations that can come from the Portfolio Minister to those businesses, you know, which can include. Um, could include procurement requirements.
Okay, so it can, and that, and and what about where we're minority shareholders like Ausgrid and and Endeavour, for example?
Yeah, so we don't have control. Um, our directors who sit on those ministerial holding companies are part of the board of Endeavour and Ausgrid. But the government does not have control of those organisations.
Can I ask a a related question? Um, I know that the Auditor General pointed out in her report about an exemption. Given to, uh, Landcom by the previous treasurer.
Hmm.
And I just wondered, on what basis, that seems to be a different category to state-owned corporations. On what basis are those exemptions given? What are the reporting requirements? And how many other such exemptions? Were given under the previous government?
I'd have to take that question on notice. We obviously have a large number of businesses across the portfolio. Um, and it's not just the shareholding ministers, but there are portfolio ministers that sit in different departments that, um, set out their expectations.
Yeah, it's just that it's the treasurer particularly gives exemptions, so whether it's in another portfolio, ultimately, it's the treasurer in in that Landcom case. And I wonder how many other cases and how many other exemptions the treasurer gave.
And can I just, um, clarify the question? It's an exemption from?
Uh, from the reporting requirements.
So talking about annual reporting requirements?
Uh, I just can go back to the auditor's report. Yes, so it's the same kind, it falls into that same kind of category of those. And it goes to our data question of we're not getting a complete picture because there are some entities that have been given either that blanket exemption or particular exemption. So I can refer you to, as we finish, refer you to the part of the Audit General's report.
Yeah, okay, that would be appreciated. Um, obviously, a lo- number of those businesses have their own governing legislation as well as having independent boards. And they are set up commercially, um, in that way, so they are treated differently for reporting purposes.
Sure.
Thank you. Um, thanks very much for your attendance. Uh, that does conclude the hearing for today. Um, the secretary will be in touch in relation to any questions she took on notice or, um, supplementary questions that we may provide. Uh, in any case, they'll be due within twenty-one days, um, but that wraps us up for today. Thank you.
Right, thank you.
Thanks.